Are we ready? Yes, can I go?
And that's when you go like, you would think they'd make those quotes like that in the mid, do you? No way.
What's this one?
Just watch. What can be seen?
Is it better sideways or?
But we're always one step at a time. It doesn't matter.
Okay, ready? Monica, may I? Can I start? Okay, thank you. Good evening, this is the Dana Beach City Commission Virtual Budget Workshop. It is Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 5:06 PM. Can you please call the roll?
Mayor Llewellyn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Oddman. Commissioner Brandemart.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Yeah.
Mr. James.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
The Attorney Ansborough.
Here.
First up is presentations. First presentation is by Evan Snow on the Mermaid Project, sponsored by Vice Mayor Oddman.
Can we call in Evan?
Yes. Um, Evan, Evan, can you join us? He's in the ed room. Thank you, Monica.
You can set it up on that table there. I didn't realize that was the presentation table.
Thank you. We have a presentation that we are going to send to you via email because we, I don't know if you'll be able to see this tiny screen here, but we're going to refer to the screen as a presentation, but you'll get it emailed so you can have it in detail later if you can't see it. Ready, start? All good? Okay. So, my name's Evan Snow. I am a very, very passionate Broward County native, community builder, arts advocate, creative problem solver, creative marketer, creative entrepreneur, and executive director of the Thousand Mermaids Artificial Reef Project, which is a core restoration initiative under another nonprofit we've launched called the Ocean Rescue Alliance. And what we do is we make artistically crafted artificial reefs that look and act like natural reefs, but they're engineered with many, many different considerations from helping mitigate erosion, the need for beach re-nourishment, to creating a diving destination which can help with ecotourism, to countless other benefits that these wonders of the world create. But unfortunately, since they're out of sight, out of sight, out of mind for many people, we don't always value them the same as our roadways and other things. So, we're going to show you a little bit about what we've been doing in Palm Beach County and other places around the world, and what we are proposing to do here in Dana Beach. Do you guys, are you familiar or aware with the situation affecting our coral reef here and the economic impacts and those things? I'm sure you've heard Stacy Brown is our education coordinator of our nonprofit. She's a former NSU marine biologist and graduate of the university, and she heads up our education program where we work with kids to get them certified and aware of the problems that are plaguing our reefs so they can help us as citizen scientists. She also helps us as a dive coordinator. She's going to tell us a little bit about some of the issues. She's going to tell us a little bit about some of the things that we do to help these issues and how we're going to propose, how we're going to help you guys here specifically in Dana and how it helps the bigger picture with Broward County, which if you guys know, the reef that we have is the largest natural reef in the continental United States. It's the third largest in the world. If this reef unfortunately dies as it's currently slated to do, our way of life here is going to be drastically different. So, we're proposing some innovative solutions that are already approved in other counties and approved by the Army Corps, DEP, Palm Beach County, and everybody else to help save and start our first Broward effort here in Dana Beach.
Okay, so some of the different ways that we are currently working in West Palm Beach is creating artificial reefs, and then those will allow for reef restoration within the West Palm Beach area. And then we also will be able to do research opportunities for scientists. So, we have quite a few, I'd say at least five research projects that we are currently looking for scientists to take on at various universities within West Palm. And then, of course, the ecotourism component. We're partnering with different scuba shops in West Palm and hoping to get more and more people out there because the ability for us to connect people to what's going on in the ocean is the most important aspect of the project. And we also have a citizen science program. Currently, I have five schools here. We actually, because I'm local here, my sons go to South Broward High, and they have a forty-person, forty-person marine science group there. And so, they help us with different aspects of the project. I teach them bleach watch programming, fish identification, and then we also do beach cleanups and reef cleanups if they're scuba certified. Yes, a lot, yes, a lot of ocean-based awareness. And I also have always felt that being able to engage children in like hands-on activities is one of the most important aspects of being able to teach them things and keep those things ingrained in their minds. So, our projects are very hands-on, and they always allow for pretty much anyone who wants to take part in the activities be a part of it. So, it's very all-encompassing.
We want to start the kids young because a natural coral reef to reach its sexual maturity generally takes eighty years. The reefs are dying, and it's estimated that the coral reefs might be dead in this area within potentially ten, eleven years. We're literally on a ticking time bomb, and the stats that know reports that we like to make as a focal point for people to understand the importance of the coral reefs. The ones that really matter to us, there's $7 billion of economic impact in Southeast Florida alone directly tied to the coral reef between ecotourism, sport fishing, and countless other benefits and countless other byproducts as a result of the reef that support over seventy thousand jobs. If this reef dies, we are not, I know you're not for Lauderdale, but we're not the yachting capital of the world anymore. We don't have the biggest boat show in the world anymore. The marine industry is obviously going to take a hit as a result of people going other places where there are healthy oceans and healthy reefs. So, that's the real-world impact that we like to at least make people aware of if they're not aware. And then there's some environmental benefits and considerations that I know in Dana Beach you guys care about specifically. Thankfully, Stacy is a very passionate Dana resident, and some of the benefits of the reefs will help some of these considerations specifically.
So, the main ones that we're trying to encompass with our project are, of course, like I said before, tying in the artistic components, being able to tie in the people and make them aware of the need for something for them to look at when they're diving to an ecotourism destination. But then also to increase the fish that are there. If we put more reefs out there, we're going to have more homes for fish, obviously, and that's a very critical thing if we care about, you know, our reefs. We need fish, and we need that to enliven the whole scuba industry. But the main things to reduce storm surge, our first-line reef has really been covered. If any of you are scuba diver snorkelers, you've seen it every time, unfortunately, we re-nourish the beaches. We have more sand that's covering the first-line reef. And then each time we have a storm come through, that high wave height is going to push more sand over our reefs and then also encroach and actually erode our beaches further. So, we're hoping that by building an artificial reef, we could reduce those storm wave heights and then also keep some of the sand on the beaches. So, that's of course a critical component of our project.
Are any of you guys in here divers? Any of the commission? No? Okay. Does anybody know what ecotourism really is? Ecotourism. Eco, when I say ecotourism in Dana Beach, what comes to mind? Okay. Going to the beach, right? The pier, sport fishing, right? Correct. Correct. And as to complement all of your existing efforts and all the efforts of Dana Point and all the efforts of the CRA and all the efforts of art in public places and all the other things you're doing, this is an ecotourism driver that people are going to fly in here from around the world to dive this reef in particular. We just got our latest press hit in Travel and Leisure Magazine. They get forty million views, unique viewers, and it's the most popular travel site in the world, talking about you can be a mermaid and dive with mermaids in Palm Beach County, Florida. I'm a very, very proud Broward County native, and I've worked very, very hard through Choose 954 and a lot of our other initiatives to cultivate culture and community, to keep people to know with all the great things that are going on. We're able to leverage a lot of additional benefits of our relationships with the CBB, our relationships with the Culture Division, our relationships with all the CRAs, and we're self-funded, independent community builders that work with cities to help with initiatives like this. So, we are going to do our part, not just to give you art and a little bit of benefit, but these reefs do more things than we could tell you in this presentation. We're going to be respectful of your time, of course. But basically, the main benefits, ecotourism driver, to have people want to travel around the world to dive here, it does provide habitat for fish. That's one of our main focal points that our reef builder and our engineer, very important, wants to make known as very important. We don't have habitat and protection for fish. The juvenile fish can't seek protection from the predators to grow to adults. We have low fish populations. These sport fishers, sport fishermen unfortunately, do not think about, will my industry be viable in a few years if there's no fish? And if there's no reef, there is no fish. And we're able to accelerate some of those processes, help preserve species, help with the coastline protection, help with the potential erosion reduction. And the last one we'll say with respect to your time, we know that you guys, as does many cities in the state of Florida, spent significantly to replenish the beach with more sand. I believe the number's six million dollars. We're not saying that a hundred thousand dollars worth of reefs is going to mitigate six million dollars worth of beach erosion, but in the state of Florida where we spend a hundred million dollars to put more sand back on the beach, with these reefs having just one benefit being mitigating the potential need for extensive beach re-nourishment, what if this one hundred thousand dollars worth of reefs that we're proposing that has many education programs and other benefits in it is going to give you guys ROI of millions of dollars of tax-paying ecotourism dollars, potentially saving the extensive spend on the beach replenishment and all the other countless benefits that we can't get into right now? Those are some of the benefits of what we're proposing, helping the kids, helping the community and all that. And we're very, very excited to potentially start it with you guys here in Dana Beach. We have been speaking with Hollywood and Broward County, but we are here presenting now first, and we're glad to bring this and have Dana the first city potentially be the first city of the Broward Reef, which is going to be a big, big, big deal in the reef world and everything else. Is that good? Five minutes, eight minutes?
Evan, can I have you just clarify? So, when we talk about it or the reef, can you explain to them exactly what are you, what are you, what are you proposing for Dana Beach? For this one hundred thousand dollars?
Okay.
They, what exactly would we be getting?
Very good question. For this part, for this part, Dana, Stacy's going to pass this around to show you the renderings that we put together. We're going to email this to you so you'll have it. But basically, we're creating signature, we're going to create signature, kind of like a billboard in the permitted zone that the county's allocated you guys to have the reef in partnership with the Army Corps of Engineers. We're able to put art in any tasteful direction we want to as long as the reef passes the stability analysis of the permitting process. We are going to propose your logo and some other tasteful, environmentally friendly and environmentally beneficial supporting structures and the tail for the photo op. We're going to give you guys two tails. We have a photo op that we could place at the pier. We could place one at City Hall. People get posed as a mermaid, it raises awareness about the project, gives you guys more user-generated content, social media. So, that's all in the presentation that we'll email to you, but she's going to pass around the rendering we put together.
Could you tell me what is the biggest threat to the reefs?
To the natural reef?
Yeah, what is the biggest threat that you could cure?
The biggest threat that we could cure?
Yeah.
And there's macro, a hundred million feet level is saving the reefs, okay? That is a bigger problem that the ocean actually has to, needs to cool down. That's outside of our control. We can't cool down the ocean. Climate change, right? There's other things that need to happen. This is one component. The one thing that we can guarantee and tell you right now, by putting more engineered structure, which we're going to show you, into the ocean, it does provide habitat for fish. It does break down wave energy and storm surges. If our natural reefs die and there's no barrier to break it down, I heard the city manager from Hollywood propose it's going to be a billion dollars to put a wall in the ocean. You guys are not going to spend a billion dollars to put a wall in the ocean. We could put a hundred thousand dollars and start to make a dent right now, and the clock's ticking with nine years left of reefs. So, the county's not going to spend this money. The county does not have money for artificial reefs. This is something we've self-funded, and we've put over four million dollars of our own money, and we're not independently wealthy people. So, we're hoping, starting with the city of Dana Beach, it's going to enlist the support of other people. And we already are applying for NOAA grants. We're working with NOAA. We're working at the highest levels. It's a much bigger problem than I can explain to you in one answer, but our portion provides habitat for fish so they can grow. We can replenish fish stocks and fish populations, which is a big deal in Florida, and mitigate the need for you to potentially have to keep spending six million dollars on sand.
So, there is no other city that we can like contact to see?
Yeah, of course. We're partnered with Palm Beach County. We're putting fifty reefs out next week in Palm Beach County.
But they're not established already. I mean, they haven't been established. This is new.
This is the first for Broward County. We've been doing this in Palm Beach County for many years. Yeah.
Evan?
Yes.
Can you also talk about, so what she's passing around, I'm guessing is the renderings of it.
Yeah.
And it's fine, you don't need to show me because I've seen some of them. But so, are these custom, I want them also know, is this something where the, the, the commission or who's ever going to, you know, be doing, working with this project, is it fully customizable?
Yes. Yeah, these are just renderings that we created.
A mermaid or to be turtle, mermaid, seahorse. I'm not so keen on a billboard. So, but we would want something that was signature to Dana Beach.
Exactly.
Okay. So, it could be whatever the imagination is that's in life.
Whatever we could want to do, what we propose really because it's important to connect those, the people who are never going to go in the ocean with how their land activities do impact the ocean. So, what we're proposing is two of the land-based modules, which, which are, they're two large size, which this is like eight foot tall, this one on the right-hand side. And then also these selfie tails, which we've, we've put together at a couple of different events. We had a Tortuga event, and people really like it. So, it's very engaging. They stand in front of it. Now they're a mermaid. They take pictures, they post on social media, and it's very engaging. We stand there and we talk them through what we're doing. And then, one second. And then underwater, we can also do whatever you'd like. So, this one is the underwater rendering. I think Commissioner James asked me if we can do them in color. And we can do them in color, but those are forty-five feet underwater. We probably do the ones on land in color because it makes sense underwater. At about thirty feet, you lose, oh, you lose the reds. So, it's very blue, it doesn't make sense. But we can do cut-through. Yeah, but we can do cut-throughs. So, so we did a Pier sixty-six module, and that was cut-through so you could see it completely well underwater even for about the first year. And then it starts being encrusted with marine life because that's what they're intended to do.
Thank you, and we probably could discuss this, I guess, when, when they leave. So, this would be, we would have this on land and in the water?
We would have two, we're proposing two large eight-foot modules for on land for you to deploy or to display wherever you want. We can move them too because they're made out of, not concrete, so like fiberglass, so they're mobile. And then two selfie tails as well for you to also display. And then in the water, twenty modules. The modules for in-water are about three thousand five hundred pounds each. They're eight foot tall and eight foot around. So, they're very large modules. But that's what those, and any of them can be fabricated with whatever sculptures you'd like. I would recommend to think of something that is inherently Dana. And I don't really have a mascot per se right now, but some of them have turtles or seahorses or whatever, you know? Come up with something, and then that to me would be what we would kind of put, sprinkle those out on the reef. The other, most of our modules would be ones that would be made for, for that stability that is necessary to impact that, the wave height reduction and also for fish populations. So, those are very key, critical components. But so there would be sculptures on every single one, but we could do a couple of sculptures that when people are swimming up to it, you're going to see a sculpture, sculpture, a sculpture, and then the low-profile modules in between, and it looks really nice.
And essentially, we're putting eighty thousand pounds of concrete into the ocean that's engineered to provide countless benefits that the hundred thousand initial investment, which will be supplemented by private investment from our foundation, from grants, from the chamber, that hundred thousand will help kick this off. And we're going to show you one last thing, but you get a good amount of art, a good amount of environmental benefit, a photo op, and a bunch of other things for that initial hundred thousand that we propose, and we'll work with you on the artistic direction and design.
But I don't think that Evan took cover yet.
That's okay. We have several questions. We have several questions, and we need to get moving because we have other presentations, okay? Commissioner James, are you finished? Because I have a couple of questions.
I have one other question. When you all have done this in other cities, what has been the total cost-benefit? So, I hear you saying a hundred thousand to kick it off, and then you're going to get these other grants. In other cities, how much of a match have you gotten to supplement the cost for the entire project? Or how much does the entire project cost?
So, right now, the reef builder has put in the bulk of the project costs, all, all construction costs. And then the beach, West Palm Beach, they pay for the barge. So, so we've done pretty much, it's all been money of ours that we put into.
They don't have money to give us to build the reef as Broward County doesn't because the budgets are small. We've self-funded the first two million dollars of the project, and he's been doing reefs in Palm Beach County for thirty years with the equivalent of Ken Banks who just retired in Palm Beach. So, we have experience with this, and we'll be glad to talk about it later. We know we have to wrap it up.
I, I know, but I, I need to know, like, how much does the total project cost for, like for Dana Beach? How much would the total project cost? I know what you're asking us.
Uh, there, there's no, there's no, there's no number that we need to do. Putting more structure out there helps. So, the more we could put out there, if we put a hundred thousand dollars worth, that will make an impact. If nobody else ever gives us any money to do it, that hundred thousand will still make an impact. We're going to grow and scale it, and we're going to do a reef from north to south Broward, which we're going to show you as well, that you guys are going to be a part of. It's an eight-million-dollar reef that's going to go from north Broward to south Broward. We just can't pay for the whole thing. We're not independently wealthy people that can self-fund reefs to benefit the rest of the world when there is money allocated in budgets to do this as obviously we're here for. We're a five-one-C-three nonprofit. Our reef builder's been doing this in Palm Beach County for thirty years. I know that CBB is not going to tell you to do this, but if you guys want to do this, we're ready to go. And I'm a very, 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 very passionate Broward County native, ready to kick this project off in Dana Beach. We're going to do it in Hollywood because I've been working with Hollywood CRA for many years, full transparency, but we'd love it to start in Dana, and if it happens in 2021, 2022, 2023, we're going to be doing this the rest of our lives, so no rush.
Okay, couple of questions. First of all, by building this reef, it will attract fish, correct?
Correct.
And then the idea is that they'll stay, they'll mate, they'll have more fish, and then they'll have, it'll increase the population? Because I know it's a major problem in Broward County, especially off the ocean right now, there's just no fish, not like there used to be. I have two questions for city manager, I think. Number one, if we were to do something like this, is this something that you think we could get funding from Tallahassee? I can't remember, I'm sorry. From the, um, BP. Because I know in the past that they've been very interested in helping us if we have some things that we're being proactive on. Is this something that you, that you think we might be able to get some funding for, for grants and otherwise?
Well, one of the things that I was thinking about when I was meeting with Evan and the vice mayor is DEP, FINE, which is Florida Inland and Navigation, which we've been successful in the past in getting grants from there and other municipalities, but also fundraising efforts. We fundraised and we made, you know, twenty grand for our first food giveaway. I think we could partner with Dana Point. So, I, I don't see the whole impact of the hundred thousand dollars coming from us. I think that this could be a great fundraiser, a great opportunity to have partnerships and also seek grants as well.
Okay. The other thing that I'm thinking is that especially if it's attracting fish, would it be possible for us to put some type of an underwater camera out there as well that we could have another live feed going? Because I know that's something that they have at the pier in Deerfield Beach, and it gets a huge draw. And it's something that we probably should be doing here anyway with our pier, but if we have this, it would be one more thing.
I, I believe that at the last commission meeting, I spoke to the vice mayor afterwards, and we were actually, you know, sending each other messages at the same time when we thought about that. So, that is, that is a great idea. To me, and Frank and I were discussing, any one-time expenditure that's not a reoccurring expenditure, we're going to get that return from that investment, not just in ecotourism, but people love like really cool places to go to. We saw, we were talking about what happened in Wynwood, you know, just the selfie component, the, you know, under, under, underwater and above water and the partnerships. And also, what I wanted to ask is, could this be done in phases? If, can we start with a phase one and have it multi-year?
Yes, yes. I'm a huge proponent of multi-phase. I think that's a great way to, as I said, little by little, impact the community as well as of course the ocean or marine environment as well. I love.
Because I also see it as a capital project, you know? The width of our beach, you start with X, and every year you put money. And all of a sudden, if we're able to have something really impactful that mitigates our erosion, it's a win-win all around.
There, we'll send you the map. There's permitted zones by the Army Corps of Engineers, and the county gets the permit that we work with the county to deploy the reefs into this acreage of permitted zone, and it's underwater real estate, and we'll fill up as much as we can. We just cannot self-fund it. We're going to get more grants, and we're going to keep doing it. But we're glad to do, start at whatever level that we could start at, and it will grow in many phases and scale from there. That was more, a better answer to your question. It starts, it could start, and we have eighteen in Palm Beach County. We're going to add fifty more this year. We're adding hundreds of tons of concrete to the ocean, and tons are, it's a lot of concrete, so that's a lot of.
I think if you're able to provide our city commission a design that could be multi-phase so they could see what the whole project would be as a capital investment in multi-year, but what they could start with phase one in year one.
Well, but, you know, my, my concern about the phases, especially with the economy that we're in, you know, with the phases not being finished, I do want to put in, this part of this, why I brought this forward, this is a statement. We have never put in a prioritization for environmental projects in Dana Beach. And this to me is our way of stepping forward and saying, we're going to start doing that, that although this commission is not going to be able to see the benefits of that really in our term, you know, things like what's happening at the beach, what's happening with the climate, what's happening with erosion, this is our first step into really trying to address that and to globally look at how we as a coastal city feel that we have a moral obligation to do more. So, this is kind of our statement of saying, we're going to start doing more. We're going to start prioritizing environment. We're going to start prioritizing environmental factors. And so I don't want to just baby-step into this too much. I do want to put down some, and, you know, I, I understand that we have the grants. I do agree with you, Dania Point would be interested in helping us, and there's lots of opportunities for things like that. But I don't want to baby-step into this. I want to really walk into it and, and make this commitment that we're, we're going to start doing this because I, I think the return on this is going to be huge and really, really significant. I don't want to miss out on that.
No.
It may also impact other cities, that they may want to jump in and do the same thing, and then it also helps the environment as a whole. I, I, I agree with that.
But let's say if we wanted to do our whole beach, let's say if year one, we want to do a hundred thousand, boom, they have a big splash. What would it cost to do as much as we can do?
Or as what much as what we feel would be necessary. And that's rarely, I know there is, I know through the state of Florida, through the Re- Re- Nourishment Program, there are studies that we can do to try to factor that in. I don't know that off the top of my head. I don't even know the Army Corps knows that number, but I know that we can, we can fund a project with everyone that we, the researchers that we really love to be involved in this and get those studies completed so we can actually make a real impact. Because that's something we're very passionate about, not just putting things in the water, but that they actually do something, that we can go out and actually monitor. We monitor quarterly at, at, uh, West Palm. We would love to do the same thing here, and I would love to have our students and our community engaged in this effort, relaying them back the information, showing, look at how many things have changed. Look, we had no reef line here before. Now we've made a six and eight-foot reef line. And then we can check about, back on the restoration and the actual monitoring with, with other of, uh, efforts.
Commissioner Harris had his hand up before.
We're presenting at the, um, Florida Artificial Reef Summit and, uh, the International Core Reef Symposium to the top scientists in the world. They've accepted our presentation amongst all the other core restoration initiatives around the globe. The time is now. We're doing this, and, and, uh, it's being recognized, and we'll send you all those things to validate, like, who we are. You can go to a Reef Builders facility. It's fifty thousand square feet. It's incredible. And it's all backed up by Palm Beach County and other places we work with, so.
Are you aware that there's a group here in Dania Beach that call themselves mermaids, and they put on their tails and they go swimming? Are you familiar with them?
Really?
Yeah, they're, one of them is in my neighborhood, and they, they actually.
Mermaid Charlotte. That's our attorney. That's our pro bono attorney.
Yeah. She's an attorney by day, and she's a mermaid by night.
She's helping us with our trademark, and she's helping us with our legal work.
Yes, I happen to know her pretty well, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know.
It's a small world.
What better way would there be to put those monuments in the water than have a bunch of mermaids swimming around?
And then we're, the last, last thing I promised, we're giving people more reasons to choose nine-five-four. The choose nine-five-four thing, the Fort Lauderdale Art Design Week thing, all the other things that we do that you guys might or might not know about, all come back to help the Thousand Mermaids. All free additional marketing and additional support. Not charging you guys to share this initiative on all the other channels that I created and own and operate to build community in Broward County. Those are additional byproducts and perks and benefits, and we're winning PR awards for the stuff we're doing for the destination. I'd love it to be the mermaids as well. I, I know this passion might come across wrong to some of you guys. I've been doing this three years pro bono on the side, aside from my businesses. We're, this, this is our life. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we want to see each presentation or deal with each presentation first, and then we can discuss everything, or?
However you want to. It's, it's your form.
Yeah, I just, I just have somebody waiting who's been here since before five. Oh, okay, okay. All right. Well, we can discuss it a bit. We can come back at the end, because we're going to have to come back at the end anyway, I think, and talk about all of them.
I can't hear you.
We're, we're deciding if it makes more sense to discuss this project now or to have the other presenter come in and discuss their project and discuss them both, both together. I was just saying I wanted to do it now because it's fresh in our mind.
I mean, we can discuss it now. I think, I think we need to come back at the end because I'm, I don't know if you and I are the only ones that brought people or if other people have other things.
So why don't we just put our two cents in, and then we'll do the real meaty discussion afterwards?
That's fine.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything?
I, I will say, if I have an option, if we choose to do the project, I would rather do it all at once and not phased out. I really don't like or trust the phases that ever happen. We're still trying to phase out the beach plan, and I'm, and I'm kind of thinking of where the eight-foot mermaids are going to fit within the beach plan. I know they can be moved. Um, but everything that we bring to want to change about the beach is always, let's wait till the plan, let's wait till the plan, let's wait till the plan. I want to start dissecting that plan. So if we could start doing smaller things within that plan, instead of having to wait for RFP, I don't even know where the RFP is. And, and I know that there, there are several layers of those things that have to happen for one single thing happens on our beach. I don't want to do that. I don't, and I, and I don't want to do that with this project either. Like, we haven't invested in, you know, the economic and, and, and the environmental effects that, that we have. And if we're going to invest, I don't want to, I don't want to phase out a hundred thousand dollars, um, especially if we have the one hundred thousand dollars to be able to do that project. Uh, maybe when we do the one hundred thousand dollars, we can then look at other people who want to, then maybe we can incentivize them to, to, to enhance or to grow the project. But I definitely, um, I want to see more. I want to hear more. I want to know more.
Commissioner, I just wanted to clarify something. My multi-phase, uh, recommendation wasn't not the hundred, it would be a hundred thousand, and then in future years to augment to that, to see if we can even make it a bigger reef. But it wasn't not to start with the one hundred.
Okay. And that's, I guess, what my, my misunderstanding was as well. And because I think we start this with the hundred thousand. Um, you know, a- as you said, the hundred thousand was really the jump-off point. So the talk about doing the phases, we can have the additional phases if we wanted to add certain things later on down the line as it made sense. But I, I don't want to, uh, you know, I know you like to use piecemeal. You know, I don't, I don't want to just have a little turtle on, on there. Come take a picture with our little Dania Beach turtle. No, we want something big. This is a big, this is a big statement that we're making. And there's a lot of big press that we're going to be getting with this. So I want to put the hundred thousand dollars in. I really think that this is something that we're going to see our return on, and we're, we're going to see our return on fairly quickly. And you see Evan's passion. He's really remarkable, and I have been watching him like a hawk to see if, you know, were these just his big dreams? Because some people are very passionate about this kind of thing, and then you don't see it come to fruition. And I watched it come to fruition in, in Palm Beach. And I said, oh my God, we need to get on this in Dania Beach because otherwise, you know, Hollywood or Hallandale, they're going to, they're going to get on this first.
We, we rarely have an opportunity to, to, to lead in something. We are Broward's first city, and I don't know if Commissioner James had walked in yet, but I've made the announcement. I don't know if Bill was here in the room, but, you know, we finally have art in public places. And that's something that was very passionate when I first came in there. And whereas we didn't take advantage of phase one and phase two of Dania Point, we just got our first check, twenty-two thousand dollars from a developer. And those checks are going to be coming in as we approve these projects. And before the end of this calendar year, we can even have double that. So we are already almost, you know, one-fourth of the way there because it's also art. So just wanted to let you know that we just got our first big check.
Do we have the money, though? Do we have the money?
The twenty-two thousand dollars already in.
What, within the budget? Is there any other room anywhere else?
Oh, no, no. Remember, Frank and I, after we went through all this budget, we set aside five hundred thousand for you guys to invest. So, yeah, you could, that twenty-two can continue to build. You don't even have to touch it. You have five hundred thousand that you guys can discuss projects such as these two that you're presenting.
Okay. So I mean, I, I won't keep chewing off everyone's ear, but my request would be for the, for the, my, where I want to see this is I want to start with the one hundred thousand. And I, I mean, you know that two hun, that twenty-two thousand is not going to sit in that, in that account for more than ten seconds before, you know, either we want to add on to this or somebody else has a great project that they want to do. So that would be my request, but, uh, I know, uh, the mayor has a presentation, so let's listen to her as well.
Once you give us a consensus, it'll be officially added in a line item in ecotourism, in reef preservation, um, to mitigate beach erosion, and it's an environmental all-around component.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, the next one is a presentation that I requested, um, by Mason Jackson on a Dania Beach job training initiative. Um, Mason can come in, and I'll just kind of give a quick intro as to what we've been doing and, um, see where we can go from there. So many of you may already know Mason. Um, he's, he's been very involved in the, in the, uh, Creator for Lauderdale Alliance and a number of other organizations he's partnered with. Um, and he's very valuable to Broward County. He's going to be retiring soon. Um, but I've been working with him now for about a year, um, talking about some job training initiatives that we can do. And with COVID, it kind of changed things up. So we recently had a discussion, um, ahead with him, as well as Broward, Broward College, Sheridan Technical, Maceph. Um, gee, I can't remember who else was there. There were a, a bunch of different people from different organizations, both employers, schools, um, people with money like Mason, um, who do workforce initiatives, um, and trying to figure out a way to get people trained and even retrained in some situations for careers that they can do that aren't necessarily going away. And the big, the big one, of course, in Dania Beach is the marine industry. Um, there are others as well, obviously. Um, but there are a lot of certification programs right now that are being expedited by the schools. And the programs exist, the, uh, money is there for the tuition and for the books that won't have to come out of anyone's pockets, except for his. Um, the bigger issue is, the jobs are there. The biggest issue is the other life expenses that go along with that. So what I, what I, what I want to propose, and what Mason will talk about a little bit, is how we can be a partner with each of these entities to maybe put some grants forward to cover those expenses so people can actually go and get these certifications and get jobs in those fields. So Mason, a little quick little intros. You can explain who you are and what you do and all that.
Thank you. I'm going to do that. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Loelen and members of the city commission, thank you for allowing me to be here this, this evening and talk to you about what I think is a groundbreaking opportunity for the city to get involved.
I put this a little closer.
I'm sorry. You can't, you can't hear me?
Pull it towards you. Yeah, pull it towards you or even just hold it.
Sorry. Is that better?
A little better.
Is that better?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, very good. Thank you. As I was saying, I think this is a groundbreaking opportunity for the city to get involved in helping its citizens get jobs, contribute to self-sufficiency, strengthen families, while helping the businesses in Dania get the talent they need to grow and thrive. Uh, as the mayor said, I'm Mason Jackson. I'm now the president emeritus of Career Source Broward. I'm just about to retire. And I, I want to point out that Dania Beach is the only municipality, the only city that has approached us on, on this basis, where the city is willing to consider contributing to the resources we and the other, uh, partners bring to the table, to do something about the worst unemployment that we've had since the Great Depression. So a quick note about us, while I'm sure all of you on the commission are familiar with Career Source Broward, uh, I understand that we're being taped. I see that we're being taped, and the viewers, both job seekers and employers, might not be. We are a federally funded program which operates the three one-stop career centers in Broward. The nearest one to us is on Da, on Davie Road Extension near University Boulevard. These centers provide comprehensive services, the tools, the techniques, the technology, and even training to help people get a first job, a new job, or a better job. We also help businesses get the talent they need. In fact, we think businesses are our primary customer since they have the jobs and the need for the skilled workforce. It's our business to help them get those skills. In doing so, we are also helping communities thrive. So in that sense, we're also an economic development agency. In fact, we like to say that we're the people's side of economic development. We serve some forty to sixty thousand people a year and some seven to ten thousand businesses. We have extensive resources to match people with those opportunities out there, assessments to help them find their way, and many workshops, most of them online right now, to help them sharpen their jo, sharpen their job-seeking skills or their job retention skills. If a person doesn't have the skills to get a job in, in this economy, we can help pay for tuition, books, tools, uniforms, and certification tests to get them that training. And we have those dollars available as we speak. So let me say that again. We have those dollars available as we speak. It's important to know, however, that we don't do the actual skills training. We, we do that through vetted training providers, both public and private, who train for the jobs that we certify are in demand in Broward. Providers like, as the mayor mentioned, Broward College and the three technical colleges, Sheridan, McFadden, Atlantic, which used to be, you may know them as the technical centers. We basically supply the scholarships, and we are willing to partner with you and, and those other partners to bring these resources to the table. So if we have all that, you're probably asking yourself, what do we need the city for? Right? To answer that, I have to provide you with a little context, and I will try to be as brief as possible. Even before the pandemic, and it will be true during the recovery, we know that the growth of jobs will be in the middle skills area, something that people refer to as opportunity jobs. These are jobs that require training beyond high school, but not a college degree. Some estimates show that by the year 2030, some half to two-thirds of all jobs will be in the middle skills area. These will allow for some short-term training and certification strategies, some as short as eight weeks, but many can be completed in a year. Some will take longer. Industry-recognized credentialing is what our business customers are calling for, and the educational community is responding to that call. Right now, the Florida Department of Education has identified over a hundred, uh, rapid credentialing opportunities. But the people who come to us, who are economically disadvantaged and have barriers to employment, rarely just need training. They need other community supports as well. And when you overlay the pandemic, you have people who may be candidates for training but need more support than we can give. This has been shown in at least one other state that had guaranteed free training for all of its citizens. They found that students are hous, uh, students are housing insecure, they are food insecure, they are transportation insecure, they need help with utilities. If a person is worried about being thrown out of their apartment while they're in school, or their car breaks down and they can't get to class, they frequently drop out, or they fall behind, then they drop out. If they can't afford childcare, they don't even start. The pandemic has made this worse. Lost wages, problem in unemployment compensation, huge increased demand on the not-for-profit community has made it difficult for people to pay for those basic needs. We do not have the resources to pay for those very important supportive services. That's where the city can come in. And we can do it on a pilot, proof-of-concept type of basis to see how it works and make adjustments as we go. Okay, train them. But train them for what? Where are the jobs? While it's true that many industries, principally the hospitality, tourism, eating and drinking establishments, have lost tens of thousands of jobs in Broward, there are some industries that are hiring. And one of them is the recreational marine industry, uh, along with RVs, just by the way, which is a huge industry, the marine industry is, in, in Dania Beach. People are buying boats, and those boats will need rigging, outfitting, repairs, and maintenance. The marine industry has been very vocal, even before the pandemic, in saying that they can't find enough skilled workers. So it makes sense to concentrate this pilot program on the marine industry. The partnership, all of us together, will identify a few major employers, try to assess the employer's needs. Career Source Broward can assess the people and pay for tuition and those related costs, while our partners like the college and the technical colleges do the actual training tailored to the employer's needs. In the case of registered apprenticeships, for example, we can be very flexible. Apprenticeships require the employer to pay for the tuition, but we can come in and offset the cost of their wages during the work-based learning, OJT portion of the apprenticeship, just taking some of the burden off the employer. But often, life intervenes to prevent people from being sus, successful, and the city's funding in this regard could be the difference in the success of that individual. And your funding, just by the way, is a whole lot more flexible than our federal funding. And here's the added bonus. Sometimes these certifications not only lead to a job, but they lead to the creation of a business. They can contribute to entrepreneurship in the community. A program like this can contribute to the economic well-being of the entire community and should not be looked at as a cost. I heard the, uh, discussion a little bit earlier about it being an investment. This is an investment as well in the citizens and businesses, which yields very important returns on. returns on that investment. Jobs are, after all, the ultimate social service and economic development program. Well, that's it in a nutshell. Thanks again for this opportunity, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioner Branum, did you, did I misunderstand? You pointed out marine industry. Is this only for the marine industry?
No, it could be for any industry, and at Career Source Broward, we basically engage in customer choice. Not everybody might be suited or want to go into the marine industry, so if we'll start with the marine industry, but if somebody wants to go into air conditioning or something, we can facilitate that as well.
All right, now I want to ask you something. Once you do get this done with one student, and they get a job because you matched them up.
Right.
Do you get anything for that?
You mean in terms of remuneration?
Money.
No. We have a federal allocation that comes to us to do this job, that's your tax dollars at work.
So, it's not like a headhunter?
No, no, we offer the same kinds of services, but it's not free services, because there are no free services out there. It's prepaid services through your tax dollars.
Okay, that's good to know, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. And it's for the job seeker as well, I mean, not just for the business.
Because not every kid wants to work in the marine industry.
Exactly.
And I'd hate to think that the children that really can't afford to go on after they get out of school to become efficient in something else, wouldn't have the chance to come to you and get this opportunity. That would bother me, because that isn't helping anybody.
Right, right. And they have that opportunity to do just what you're saying. This program would help with those other support services that we can't do.
Thank you.
And just to add on to that, speaking with Broward College this week, they actually provided us with a list of different programs they have that are like expedited certifications, and they're anywhere from like four to eight weeks, some of them are 16 weeks, like there are a variety of things that get certified in different areas. And there's things in graphic design, there's jobs in the business community with accounting, it's not as an accountant, but as a technologist, that sort of thing. Childcare management, they have programs for health sciences, for electronics, for construction, for FAA aircraft, airframe, general mechanics, we have the airport, you know, things like that. But there's a variety of different programs that they have right now, not just in marine, but marine is one that we started out with, because we know there's a definite need in the marine industry, and they pay very, very well. So, it's just getting the people that are trained and are skilled, and then they go and they learn on the job as well, so.
Well, Mayor, I like this program, because it's something you see that's happening for your money, and the residents would support this 100%. They really would. They would think that we really didn't just drop a kid off at grammar school, they graduated, then we dropped them off at high school, they graduated, but now they're not skilled. Because I don't think high school really makes skilled people. They eventually have to go on to another school to learn something, and this gives them something to look forward to. I would support this 100%.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner James?
Yes, what's the cost of the city?
Well, we're in uncharted territory. The pandemic has put us in a place that we've never been before, but I think they're estimating, let me back up and say, the cost of childcare alone, on a yearly basis, is about $5,000. So, I think the city is setting, is estimating about, I'll let the mayor handle it.
I, we had talked, the three of us had talked, Commissioner, I'm sorry, City Manager Mason and I all spoke about this, and we were estimating, we think that we could probably do like a pilot program of 10 people at $6,000 each. So, it would be less than $100,000, it'd be $60,000. If we wanted to put a little more in, we could probably have a little more wiggle room with it, but figuring that it would cover, and we wouldn't, it would just have to cover one of the things that they need, whether it's transportation, they could use it for whatever they need, and the key is that if it's tied to the program, and they complete the certification, it's a grant, and they don't have to do anything about it. So, yes.
Would the pilot program be for the length of time that their course is?
Yes.
And my other question would be, have you reached out to like Director or AMO to see how you could possibly supplement that? I know that, speaking with James over at Director, I think we all did a tour of Director over there.
I talked to Director, yeah.
Were you there? But Director is, in speaking with James, he always speaks about how we don't have these types of programs, I guess you could probably hear him a little bit, how we don't have those types of programs, how we don't have those types of programs here in our city, and that there are a lot of good-paying jobs, but you just can't find the people. I mean, it's an aging industry, you have a lot of carpenters and a lot of welders who are aging, but we have that skill set, but a lot of our high schoolers, they don't know that these opportunities exist. I know that I was also speaking a couple of years ago with the person, I cannot think of what their job title is, but we went all the way to the top in the port, and they do those field trips with the kids as well. And I know that they do those things, because there are a lot of jobs within the port that our kids don't understand or don't know about. I didn't even know about a lot of them until I went, and I did those tours. And so, I think it's important to also, if this is what the commission decides to support, to reach out to AMO, to reach out to especially Director, because they might be able, or they might be willing to financially put in maybe a match for whatever we give, they may give another match to that, we don't know, but there are opportunities that could make this go beyond six, and now we have 12 instead of six, because we got a matching grant, so it's just something to think about.
Actually, one of the things that we're doing is, we talked to Macev, also, they were part of these meetings as well, and Macev actually represents a lot of these different employers, and they're the ones who, so that they could get us the contacts through each of the, I'd actually spoken to Director about this as well, but they also said they have a number of other areas where they have people coming to them and saying, we need people, we need help, help us with this. And so, they would also be willing to put in a piece of this. We'd have to, you know, obviously, put the whole program together, but it's a matter of just getting, knowing that if we know we have the funding to do it, then we can start putting the pieces together, and I can guarantee you, everybody's going to jump in on it. And they may put more money into it, so.
My, where is that?
Commissioner Harris and I had Mason also both recently.
No.
Go ahead.
Okay. My last thought to put into that, I know that we have done a few job trainings, and I know that you may have had staff on it or not. I know in 2017, we did one at City Hall, and no one showed up, not a single person. And I remember being very livid about it, because we had Career Source Broward, we had the OIC, the Alliance, and not one person showed up, and everybody's claiming that they need a job, when they bump into us on the street, and it's just, it's, you know, it's frustrating, so. And I know we did another one, maybe with the CRA, and I mean, some people showed up, but my question then becomes, how are you going to get those individuals to be excited? Because we've tried to move it out in different communities, we've had it at City Hall, you know, I, even though we kind of did an impromptu or a type of job fair at Dania Point, and none of them seem to really get the people who we need. So, are you going to have a program that goes into the schools? Are you going to have a sort of campaign to really go out and get the individuals that are needed for this program?
Those efforts, Commissioner, are already underway, with Beam Fur and, you know, things like Secure My Future, and What's My Next Move, and so forth. I'm working with the City of, or with the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce, getting to parents, because there was a study done just about two years ago, talking about, talking to high school seniors, asking them who were the biggest influencers on their career choices, and they said, and it was kind of a surprise to us, their parents, not the internet, not their peers, not teachers, not brace advisors, not principals, their parents. And so, we are engaged, and we've done this twice now, with trying to get the parents to make them understand the opportunities that are in what we call these opportunity jobs, the fact that they pay really well, you don't necessarily have to go to college to have a good career, to be self-sufficient, provide for a family, and so forth. So, it's a matter of changing their minds, so that they can change the minds of the young people who are out there. And I think the pandemic is going to help, Commissioner, a lot on that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That's a big factor too, is the pandemic, and also because Broward College in particular has started, and they're not the only one, obviously, we have McFatter, the other technical schools as well, that all have similar programs, but they've actually done these expedited programs, expedited certifications. So, they've actually taken courses that would normally take two years or a year and a half, and they've cut them down to just a few weeks to get it done quickly, so people, so it's not even like they're going to have to be in the training for a long period of time, when they'll actually be able to get out there and get new jobs, and they'll be funneled into these different jobs, because they already know where they are.
They want to make money right away anyway, right?
Yeah, absolutely, who doesn't? I mean, that's, you know, you're going to school, and you want to get out there, and you want to start doing your craft. So, that's one of the, and the silver lining of the pandemic, you know, things have changed.
Right. And in many cases, not everybody's going to, of course, need childcare, but just to take that as an example, if you can't secure childcare, because you don't have the money to do it, and we can't pay for it, then you don't even start the training, you don't show up at the meeting, because you know you can't do it. So, this, you know, this would go a long way to say that there are community supports out there to make you successful. We've got jobs lined up, we've got, not only in the industry, but in other industries as well. In many cases, when you're asking somebody to go into training and they'll help you find a job later, they have been, they have heard that story before, and they're kind of distrustful. But when you have employers lined up, and you can designate the employer, say, this is where you're going to go to work, it goes a long way toward providing that hope.
Commissioner Harris, do you have something?
What you just said, Mason, was, I was, had the honor of being with Congressman Ted Deutsch at Director Shipyard some time ago, and he's all about the marine industry with jobs. I mean, like, if you, a week training program, and you're a welder, you can make up to $125 an hour. So, that welding, engine repair, upholstery, cabinets, deck and engine, air conditioning, motor repair, all those kind of things, so. Not everybody, I think his point was, not everybody is meant to go to college, but when you can go to a six or eight-week training program and make that kind of money, and then eventually, like you said, go into your own business, where you have, you know, a couple guys, your friends, you form a business, you know, Jason's Welders, and, you know, the possibilities are endless, especially when you can be an entrepreneur and make that kind of money, cabinet makers, upholstery people, especially in that industry where cost is no object.
You know, sometimes they help.
But he was all about that, so there might be some federal funding available for that from Congressman Deutsch's office. He's not the congressman in our district, but he's available.
Madam Mayor, we have the training dollars now, so I don't need you to go out after another grant. So, we have the training dollars, what we don't have are those wraparound support services that often mean the difference between failure and success. And that's what they found, the state I was talking about was Tennessee, and that's what they found with Tennessee Connect, that when they made tuition available to every single citizen in Tennessee, they found a lot of people signed up, and a lot of people dropped out because life intervened, and there weren't the supports there, so. So, thank you.
I don't know. Mayor? Go ahead, Commissioner James.
Yeah, sorry, how does this mingle in with apprenticeships?
With the what?
Apprenticeships.
Oh, apprenticeships. Apprenticeships are great learning paradigms. We push the apprenticeships, we push OJT, work experience internships, because unlike some programs out there where you learn then you earn, with apprenticeships, you earn from day one, you're earning money from day one. And so, if somebody wants to go into a marine apprenticeship, or a marine internship, or a marine OJT, we can offer that to them. But there's a great paradigm, you know, 30% of all the apprenticeships that are done in the state are done in Broward County. We are a hub of apprenticeships, and the technical colleges are very deep into that.
Is there a way to tie that on to this?
Yes, yes. It would be part of the offerings. Somebody comes in, we assess them, they want to go into the marine industry, great, they want to avail themselves of that opportunity, they don't want to, they want to become an air conditioning mechanic, or a plumber, or an electrician, we have those opportunities available to them as well.
And a lot of those skills are transferable too, so even if they, they could either be, you know, like plumbing on a boat, but then you can also do plumbing as your job, you know?
You know, I tell, I tell parents all the time, that if you want to be a precision machinist, okay, and you want to go live in New Zealand for two years, you can do that, because you'll probably get a job. You can travel anywhere in this country and get a job. Me, there's only 24 of we in the state, somebody has to die before I can move. So, you're right, there is that mobility.
You know, just like the first presenter and you, it brings something very unique, but the return on the investment, Commissioner Branum, Commissioner James, two very key things. Number one, back in the seventies, when I was in high school, not everybody went to college. You actually had shop, you had home ec, and we had very successful classmates. Now, there's such a pressure that everybody has to go to college, and so, we find ourselves in this predicament, that there's jobs available to people that could just get skilled and get this training. Number two, when we did have that career day, not a lot of people showed up, but I think if we were to really have a game plan, you know, a mailer, to really promote this program, for our residents, it could be something that we can get a lot of people involved, and I think going to career days at our local schools and letting the young kids that, you know, hey, it's cool, you don't necessarily have to go to college. I have friends now, okay, that are in their late 50s and early 60s, that are my plumbers, my electricians, my carpenters, and those people are going to retire.
Absolutely.
And what's the future if we don't invest in something like this?
I tell parents, if you'll allow me, Madam Mayor, I tell parents all the time, a story about a doctor hiring a plumber, and the plumber comes in, does the work, hands the doctor a bill, and the doctor looks at it, he says, oh my gosh, I don't make this kind of money, and I'm a doctor, and the plumber said, yeah, neither did I when I was a doctor.
That's very good.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mason, I really appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, thank you. Members of the commission, please.
Be in touch. Okay. So, I see Commissioner Harris walking away, but I saw that, we had discussed this previously, I had figured, we had said somewhere around 5,000 or so, but figuring people may have transportation issues, there might be any number, there might be somebody that actually has a job, that just doesn't pay very well, and they might work six days a week, and they need to take a couple of days off to do schooling. And then that, this way, it's like, if there is a grant that they had, and they had money that they could actually use to pay their bills, so they didn't have to work as many days, for example, that would be another use for it. But we, I really just, I think if we do grants that are, you could do $6,000, we could do a little bit more, maybe, 7,500, I don't know, per person, but tie it to the program, make sure they're enrolled in the program, do it based upon need, you know, first come, first served, whatever, and then go from there, do it as a test program, say with 10 people, like I said, for now, and if it ends up being something successful, it might be something that we can budget in the future as well.
Mayor, is there a tier program in this? I forgot to ask you. In other words, if you say, I want to go for this, and you know it's a high-paying job, but then Joe don't want to go up that high, Joe just would like to get in at a, not your Joe, you know what I mean, right? At something that would pay even lower, but that was his interest, and he would follow through and stay in there. Do these jobs have tiers, do you know?
I, that I don't know, but I mean, there are different types of jobs that they could go into, and some are going to pay more than others, but again, it's the same thing. If you're, if you're giving people a grant that they can use towards their expenses, there might be some people that do a certification that maybe doesn't, goes into a job that doesn't pay as much, so they might need a little help as they're starting that job, so they'll have that money to be able to start that job.
But if the next person needs a little more, though, that's what I meant by tiers.
There's different levels of certifications at different times.
There's different levels of certifications, right, at different times, there's, yeah, there are different levels of certification.
Okay, then that makes the difference, I guess.
So, that's a good question. There is a certification, for example, that may be six to eight weeks.
Right.
Right? And then there's a certification that may be 16 weeks.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, is it in tiers, that this guy might require a little more money, because he's in tier two, and tier one, only because it's eight weeks, only requires X amount of dollars. I wish we had asked him.
Oh, I'm sure we can get that, that's what I'm setting around.
I love that, what he's doing, because you're actually helping people, you're seeing what your job is, and how you're succeeding at it, and not only that, we could end up having our own roster of graduate students.
Those people will be our ambassadors.
Our program.
They'll be our ambassadors of the program, and they'll be able to, and they need to be residents, and, you know, if those are individuals that end up staying in the city, working in the city, renting, buying a home in the city, and then they're spending their money here as well, and they're making more money.
That's worthwhile.
Yeah. So, anyway, so basically, we have figured 10 people, 6,000 apiece for each grant, so it's not.
We can only do 10?
We, I mean, we could do more if you wanted to, or like I said, we could add more money to it, it's just, I mean, we can play with it, it's just, I just, I wanted to do something, I wanted to at least have. It's just, I just, I wanted to do something, I wanted to at least have a pilot program, so we could at least start with it and see how it does.
Because he's got the cash.
He's got the cash.
Already put towards it, so why don't we think a little higher?
Maybe we could. That's, that's up to you. If you want to do a little, if you want to do a larger number, we could do a larger number. It's just, I'm, I'm trying to be, trying to as a test, so as a pilot program. So, you know, because we do have a problem where people don't come out, or we do have a problem where people don't sign up. I, I, you know, I think it's a little different with the pandemic now, there's more people looking for jobs and looking for a changing career.
Yeah.
And, and there's also, you know, people looking to the future differently than they did before. So it's just, I, I'm hopeful that it'll be a little bit different this time. But, anyway, I'm sorry. Commissioner James? Commissioner Harris? No? Okay. Okay. All right. So did, does anybody else have, I know you have a presentation also, did you have a note?
We have a brief one. Did, did any, anybody want to discuss anything that they may want to see from that $500,000 that I set aside for you all?
Go ahead. Commissioner Harris, go ahead.
The thing that I've been thinking about and talking about lately with BSO is, is there a way that we can do a citywide traffic calming assessment? Because although lately there's less traffic, what traffic there is is going so much faster. I see it all, Chickie just said it, they're flying. Griffin Road, Denia Beach Boulevard, Federal Highway, 40th Avenue, Sheridan Street, East and West, Southeast 5th Avenue, Southeast 2nd Street, over by the casino. I mean, an initiative that we can, maybe, I contacted the MPO to see if they can provide some assistance for traffic calming. There's traffic comms, there's chicanes, you know, on some of our busier arteries, I mean, just the other day, the, the traffic on the northbound Federal Highway at First Street was shut down again because somebody got hit by a bike. And it's, you know, our resources are all out there, there's somebody, in some cases, killed. And I know when we had some community meetings out on Griffin Road, and we were a good distance away from the road, the traffic is just flying down there like it's on I-95. And it's not just cars, it's trucks, motorcycles, you know, these, these young kids that drive the cars with the loud mufflers that people complain about. So it's noise pollution and it's traffic, and that the first words out of everyone's mouth when you talk about, you know, a new development or a building is traffic. So if we can incorporate that into maybe some license plate readers around town, so we could see where some of this traffic is coming from, if it's cut through traffic, pass through traffic, rental cars, and then we'll have a better answer for people when they ask about the traffic. Because, like I said, sometimes if you're going west on Sterling Road from Federal Highway, you can get all the way out to Pine Island in 17 minutes, and then sometimes it'll take you an hour. But if you're speeding, it doesn't matter how fast you're going, people blow right by you.
Like you're standing still.
Yeah, like you're standing still or you're going backwards. But it's something to, you know, take a look at, whatever technology is available with that extra money that we have, to label this a citywide traffic calming assessment.
Mayor? Go ahead, I was gonna ask you, but go ahead.
I'm, I'm a big proponent of things like that, like what we're doing with, with transportation and transit, to make sure that where our little buses are going through the city are where they're supposed to be going. Landscaping master plan that is included here, we just did the, the lighting master plan, and, and in this budget, now you're actually gonna have that implementation. So what, what I've seen is, for example, in the past, somebody comes, we'll put a speed hum. But if, if we do a citywide assessment where we may think a, a speed hum should go, it may be a chicane, it may be a traffic circle, it may be a four-way stop. So this is something that we'll look at, at the city, all our corridors, we'll look at areas where there's a park, we'll look at area where there's a school, and we'll be able to, you know, a professional, be able to give us an assessment where we may think a chicane should go, it could be, you know, another type of, of traffic calming. And Frank just told me with, with the monies that we're not using for the bridge, that maybe those surtax dollars could be used for that. So we may have more than one pool, but, but I would definitely recommend this.
Oh, Mayor. Didn't we at one time, coming off of, on what Bill's talking about, because they're not even listening to the signs, including the stop signs, didn't we at one time talk about getting the new modern signs where there's lights around the stop sign to bring it to their attention? Because what he's proposing saves lives, and we should be about safety first. But he's right, you can't go on these streets anymore. And I keep saying to Mary, you gotta drive faster. And he'd say, why? They're, they're crazy. He'd go like that, right? I said, no, we're gonna get rear-ended because we're doing the speed limit. And it's true. If you do the speed limit, you're gonna get rear-ended. You are. In fact, Carol Stockrock, he just got side banged, and they demolished her entire car. It was totaled, and it was going through an intersection, and, but people aren't even listening to the stop signs. So I don't know, I think that what he's talking about should be a safety priority.
Commissioner James?
Yes. Um, what I will say in regards to that, living overseas, I really had a chance to experience a lot, and especially living in Israel, you didn't see a lot of police officers pulling people over for speeding tickets. They actually had, and I don't know if this is too far ahead of where we are in America right now, but they have these devices that are on the highways and on the streets, and it gives you a ticket if you're going too fast. So you don't have to worry about the police pulling you over, you don't have to worry about police interactions from a ticket if you have other warrants or whatever it is. I don't know how they did it, but if you were going too fast, they would send you a ticket. And it, it was some type of meter reading, I, I don't know how it read it or the technology behind it or who was in charge of it, but that is something maybe that we could, I haven't seen it one place here in America yet, and this was, I don't know, six years ago, so maybe we're still far behind.
It's like the red, like the red light camera.
Like the red light camera, yeah.
It's, it's sort of like the red light cameras, but they're, they're on the highways, like they're on, they're, they sit on the side, they're not all, they sit on the side and they're on the highway and, and, you know, you, you speed past it, flashes, and you know you got a ticket, just go ahead and look at your email or something like that, or, or check your mail. But maybe I, I'm more into, instead of doing assessments, really investing into something that is going to fix the issue. You do an assessment, now we have to say how it's going to be implemented and maybe have, you know, another sign. Those people don't care if the signs are flashing or not. People who want to speed don't care about flashing lights, they, they don't care about the roundabouts, they run right over it, they go the opposite way, you know? So something that is going to hit people in their pockets is something that is going to make people pay attention. And, and let me not go through that area because they don't play about their speeding. I know some, some places still have the red light reader, some places don't. And so you, you have to question, should I run this yellow light here or there? But you get a ticket enough times, you're gonna stop.
There's a problem about that. Maybe Tom can chime in on this. They stop those flashing, those cameras, and the city that won it, their case, or the guy won his case. So those cameras aren't any good that take your plate and then give you the ticket. They stopped them.
They do, but there's been, there've been a lot of competition.
Tom, why did they stop them in some cities and not other cities? She just got, you just got a ticket.
It depends on the city.
Shame on you. Must have been out, going towards west.
There's, there's very, very few cities that kept their red light camera program. It's been attacked over and over in the last three years in, in the state, so I'm not sure it even exists anymore, in, except for rare, rare instances. What you're proposing, Commissioner, that would, that would have to come from, to do a, like a meter reader along for, for speeding, that would have to come from state law. We could not possibly do that locally.
But, but I think if, if we at least, if, I mean, at least in the assessment, figure out where the, the biggest problems are, as far as the, the most speeders, the most, most tickets issued, I mean, whatever.
Or the most traffic. They, they actually have lines that, that, that they place throughout, that they're able to clock how many people are going through, through different peak times.
Because I, I might think that it's Griffin Road, because I see it all the time on Griffin Road, so I might think it's there.
I mean, federal, I've seen it a million.
But then I was gonna say, it could be federal, or it could be Denia Beach Boulevard, we don't know. I mean, it'd be good to get a sense of what the biggest problem areas are, and then maybe attack it that way.
Yeah, because Fifth may need it, like the mayor's playing now, and the other street doesn't need it.
Right.
So you can't, you can't just put them up anywhere until you know where they gotta go. So that needs what Bill suggested.
Commissioner Harris, about how much did you look into that this would cost?
$100,000, probably. I, I don't know, I contacted the MPO to see what assistance, I mean, we're members of the Broward MPO, so they might have some assistance for that. I have no idea, no idea.
We could do an, an RFP, or I can contact a couple of cities. Last time we did it in my former city, I think it was like 75, it's a little bigger city, but I think somewhere in that range of 75 to 80, we might be able to get it done.
Okay, so less than $100,000.
I'm sorry?
So less than $100,000.
Yes.
Any, anybody else have anything that they want to propose? Go ahead.
Well, I, I kind of spoke about this at the other meeting, but I know we're not having another one, so, and I know we have to make a decision here. So rental assistance, I did see what Broward County laid out. I do know that even if we perfectly divided it between the, the non-entitlement cities, it would be around $78,000. And that doesn't say that it's going to go to any particular city, it's first come, first served. Um, and this, I think the deadline has already passed, it was a very short window, you had to go, you had to have a lot of documents within those eight days. So it's no telling if any of the dollars are really gonna hit the people who really need it. I know that I've spoken to other cities, some which have done three installments of rental assistance, and still are currently receiving funding from the county because they're an entitlement city. So, um, the same thing that I proposed before, the $250,000 to be, you know, given to the CRA to do this program, is something that I'm definitely proposing, and I know that we spoke about the, I think we ended up saying 60 for the reserves for, for that as well. So those two things, and then I also wanted to, I heard when Commissioner Brandon Martin brought up about reallocating funding, so this is not even gonna come out of any of the funds, because it's already monies that have been put up, but because we have that cost savings to reallocate those $500,000 from the Smith Store properties, to be able to do land acquisition, to, to see if we can do some really cool projects in our, in our CRA. So those are my three. I think that's three. Those are my three things.
I, I missed number, yeah, okay, so 250 for the rental assistance.
Then we spoke about the reserve for the incoming person. I think we agreed on 60, I think we agreed on 60 at the last meeting. I, I wanted 100, and the CRA already had 40, and then you said 60 would get you to that point. I think that was the negotiating part of that.
Okay. So that's, so then the ask is still for the 60?
Yeah. I don't want to go above what we already agreed to.
And then the third is for the?
Oh, the third, I mean, that's, that's Commissioner Brandon Martin's thing, but I wanted to, yeah, I, I wanted to show my support on that, because I do think that we can talk about, I, I've spoken to people from Orlando all the way down to South Florida, tried to see what type of different things we could do to protect our communities that has certain distinct qualities about them. I know out west, we, we put a tree preservation type of ordinance, but we don't have that down here, so I, I, I'm unaware of any other things that we could do. But housing definitely continues to be a challenge and an issue, and I, I do think that if we are able to acquire that amount of property, we can really do some cool things. From going to, you know, the FRA awards, and, and looking at what the different CRAs have been doing, I do know that they have done a lot of different housing projects that I know that could be very beneficial. I don't know if we can, you know, do the whole, I, I know that a few of us went to Hawaii and we saw that they had their own little community, and within their own little community, you know, they had daycare, they had hair, hair salon services, they had grocery stores, they had everything they needed as a community to be able to thrive in, in, in that one area of a location. So I don't know if you call it co-housing, I don't know what the proper term is, but we could, we can do some great dynamic projects, but we can't do them if we don't have the land. And I know we don't have a lot more that we own or the city owns, but I don't want to keep doing the same standard type of housing projects, you know? So those are my, my two cents.
Good. Does anybody want to say something?
What's the breakdown?
Yeah, I wasn't sure what the breakdown was either. I heard 250 for the rental assistance, and I know 60,000 for the reserve, but I didn't understand the other one.
So, so which part didn't you hear?
Yeah, the land acquisition.
The land acquisition?
How much are you looking?
So that, so the $500,000 that was going to go to doing the Smith Store properties would go towards land acquisition.
Yeah. Remember, yes, where is it? I didn't see it on that paper there, but they said they have it, and I said I would like to reallocate it to land acquisition, give it to the CRA. It's a worthy cause. It's a worthy cause.
And on top of that, I know that we, if we leverage our dollars to be able to really put quality, you know, type of projects on that, instead of, I mean, because we're giving, I know we gave, I know we, we committed to giving to the second Saratoga project $600,000. And so although we'll get that back, we'll get so much more with acquiring land and being able to partner with other, I don't know, entities to be able to bring forth, you know, valuable projects.
I feel like I need more information on that. And I know, again, well, I just, I, I don't, what, what land are we looking to acquire? What, where are we looking to acquire from?
The, the, there are a lot of lands for sale, there are a lot of vacant lands within our CRA district, there are a lot. I mean, there, we just drive up and down the street, there are a lot of vacant lands, there are a lot of people that want to sell their properties. When we first approached Smith Store, he didn't have a for sale sign up. We went to him, am I right, Tom? We went to him, and he was more than willing to say.
That's fine. I, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand if there's a plan to do it, or is it just picking up property here and a property there? I'm just, I'm just trying to see if there's a plan in place that would, I mean, is that something that we would need to do first, is maybe put a plan into place? And then determine what needs to be done from there? That's, I just don't want to randomly start going out and try to purchase properties.
No, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't be the project manager, and I'm, I won't be, I won't pretend to be the subject, the expert in this. We definitely would need a plan, but we need to have the foundation for it first. So if we don't have the right foundation, we decide this is no longer what we want to do, we're still the drivers of it, we are the decision makers of it. If we don't like the path that is going down, we stop it. I don't, I don't think I would, even if it was my project, if it was going south or going sour, and I didn't like the direction that it was going, I would bring it back and say, you know what, maybe we need to halt on this. But in order to, to start implementing things, we need to have the foundation of, you know what? So we, we have a plan now, and now we don't have any funding or, or any of the other things. So I think that is step one.
Commissioner Harris, stand on the trigger.
Well, I, I, I'm good. Listen, I think you had said at that last meeting, what was the total, what was it worth, all those properties? And was it, yeah?
I don't, which properties?
The properties that Raquel has in the CRA. We were trying to figure out what was their money value of all of those properties, but Raquel didn't have the figures or something at that time. Something was brought up, but it was based on what you had asked.
If, if I may.
No, the property that they're on.
So if, if the game plan is affordable housing, I want to bring a couple of things to your attention. The Saratoga Three is affordable housing. We've committed to that and that's a six-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar loan that will be paid to us. We are now currently working with another affordable housing project that is under contract now that is due, due south of our, of our parking garage. So that's gonna be a multi-story affordable housing project that will also be coming forward seeking the credit of the six-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar loan. So between those two projects, it's a considerable amount of, of affordable housing that's going to be coming forward to the city in the CRA area.
Yes, I, I, I understand both projects. Matter of fact, I just had a conversation with the developer about the one that is south of the garage. But what I'm talking about is a different renaissance for the community. It's not just another affordable housing project. It is a different way of life. It is, you know, getting the communities to come together. It is building the economics within a community. It's not just another building that a lot of people can't, you know, a, a lot of people can't, they don't qualify for the affordable housing part of it because they make a little more than thirty-thousand dollars. So now all of a sudden, you know, they don't qualify for the affordable housing, but they can't afford the market rate housing. And so this is just a, a renaissance of the entire communities, not just one project that is gonna sit on one street. This can encompass an entire community. It can transform entire communities. I mean, I'm seeing everything around communities in the CRA transform, but I don't see a lot of investment into the actual area. So you see the borders of everything being built up, but there's no investment, you know, no significant investment. I mean, we, we built six houses. That's, I mean, that's, that's great. That's great that we, we built six houses. But look how many people are, are being left out. Six homes? That's, I look at other CRAs and they have the capacity and the ability to do so much more. And, and I, and the reason why I say CRA area, I know that within the CRA plan and everything else of what I've learned from going to, you know, these, these trainings, I understand that the CRA has a lot more leeway to do a lot of other things, especially with land acquisition than just a city. And this is a conversation I used to have with Bob Baldwin all the time. This has nothing to do with anything that is currently going on, but this is something that I've been trying, you know, to transform. And then when Chickie brought that idea of, I, I loved it. I, I, I loved it because this, this really could be the legacy for people and their children, another way of life. You have a lot of people that are doing the container homes. You have a lot of people that are doing so many other types of things. And I've seen those container homes with modern artistic type of architecture that you won't even know is a container home or whatever it is. But we can't do anything if we don't have the land to do it. And right now developers are buying these properties and, and they're pricing them so high and it's just, it, it isn't protecting, it isn't protecting these, these communities at all.
Oh, it's a seller's market for sure. It's a seller's market.
I wish I seen the one that they're talking about in Hawaii. I didn't go, so I didn't see it. Did you see it, man?
I, I saw something that was a project that was for the homeless, that they had a whole community that was set up separately, that was a, a, a large homeless community that they had in a certain part of the island where they did have a whole community set up there. But that was more, it was a homeless population. It, I mean, it was, it was people that, that couldn't work or weren't working. It was not a, it was not just strictly affordable housing.
Vice Mayor, what was that project in Gainesville that you talked about that was really unique?
Well, it, it's really not very unique. It's, it's popular in other countries. There's now, I think, three of them that are up and functioning in Florida, which is cohousing. I, I don't, you use the word cohousing and I, I don't know if you meant intentionally, but you know, it, it's, it's, it sounds a little bit to what she's describing where you have within a city, you have a small community. The houses are all relatively close together and, you know, and the cars all park over there and it's meant to be exceptionally walkable. It, it's generally, it's meant for this sort of, the, the people who they, they want to live close together. They want to see their neighbors. So you will sometimes have, you'll have older people who are now living alone and they, they, they want to be able to see somebody. They want to sit on their porch and be able to yell, hey, Bill, you know? They, they want that kind of intimacy.
And they're parked and the kids can see the kids playing.
Right, and then you have central to that. You have, you have these things that are shared. So, you know, for the more hippie-dippy type, they have the shared gardens. Sometimes they have the shared parks. They have the shared recreational areas sometimes. They have shared eating areas. You see the whole spectrum of it. Yes, on the West Coast, it's very popular. In North Carolina, they have some very successful ones. In Maine, they have some very successful ones. And, and like I said, I've been there. It's a very beautiful way of living. It's probably the first thing Raquel ever heard me pitch to her. And I, I, you know, I don't know the ways that you go about it, but I always felt for Dana Beach where you had such an interesting mix of you have, you have your older population, a lot of them who have lost their spouses. You have single parents, single mothers or single fathers with children who are kind of some, you know, struggling a little bit. You have, you know, you, you have this whole gamut of different kinds of people. It seemed like this was a place where that could work. So I was always looking for the opportunity for that to organically happen in Dana Beach. I don't know if that is that, that opportunity, but, but that, that's what we had been talking about before. It's really, it's called Gainesville Cohousing. It's worth looking up. I have no ties to them other than I, I just, they're, it, it's, it's an exceptionally beautiful way to watch human beings live and to even watch how they, they've been during, during COVID. You know, they, they were already, the way the houses were set up, they were close enough they could talk to each other, but far enough apart. And they all sat outside all, all these months and they're fine because they're all looking out for each other and they still have this, they're, they're not suffering the depression and the anxiety because they still have this human connection. And it's just one of the most beautiful ways to live I've ever seen in my entire life.
Well, yeah, something similar to that. No, I'm just saying, no, I understand. It's like being in the caboose or, 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 like the caboose. Like, oh, well, you know, I'm not.
Is that what you're saying? No.
Yeah, the caboose, sorry. I don't have that twang. Or in a, in an orthodox area where they don't even leave their communities, right? And, and everyone within those communities, it's been something that even since Mark was here, I've been saying, I want to get people out of their cars and on their feet. I want a more walkable downtown, want a more walkable area to, to be, like, because it's a lot of people that don't know your neighbors, you know? Just speaking to somebody like, oh, do you know your neighbor? And I'm like, no, you know, like, so building those communities because we have our elders and our seniors that, that don't really have that type of connection with the younger generation because they don't have, they haven't had that relationship. So yeah, that's something. So I wanted to see if we can get consensus on those things. I don't know if we're gonna go by one by one and see.
I also, I was gonna throw out one more thought that I brought up the last time, which had to do with parks because I know we do have that, we're gonna be the Geo Bond down the road and I would like to see us maybe do an assessment of, say, Chesterford Park because it's small and it's something that's not as expensive to do. And it would be a nice, a nice thing also to have like an example of the before and after so that we can sell it better when the time comes for the Geo Bond.
Can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me? I'm sorry.
Pull it a little closer.
Better? Okay, so I was, that was another thought that I had, I forgot, but that was my other thought that I had that I thought might be a good idea because I know that's something that we all really want to do is move forward on that and I think it would help to sell it down the road. With regard to these ideas, I have a suggestion. I'm all for the rental assistance. It was the will of the board last time to, to talk about that, to do the sixty thousand for the reserve. The five-hundred-thousand is in the budget already, correct, for the Smith Store?
The funds are already in the capital projects fund. They're already set aside.
Okay, they're already set aside. We are going to have a new CRA director. I'm thinking that it might be better to kind of hold on that until we have a new CRA director to maybe do an assessment and then come back and revisit it once that's been done. Just to see, I'd like to see a plan. If we have a plan and it, and it's a reasonable plan, sure, that would be a good way to reallocate money. I'm just trying to, I, I just kind of feel like I don't want to put the cart before the horse. I, I'd like to be able to see where we're going with it and then maybe have a better, a better plan moving forward. And that could be, you know, first of the year, then we talk about it, you know what I'm saying? So by then it's, you know, we're already into the budget or it could be before the end of the year. It's just, you know, I'd, I'd like to see what the plan is before we go in and determine definitively that that's, because the new, new executive director might come in and find that they need that money for something else or that they want to do something specifically with that. And I kind of, I, I'd like to, I don't want to take that away from the new person. I want them to be able to come in and say, this is what I think we need to do and, you know, this is how we can do it. And I feel like if we're switching it, then we're taking that decision away from that person without them having the opportunity to, to look at everything first. That's all.
Okay, can I respond? Do you want to respond? You want me to? I, I'm gonna respond to it. I think that this new executive director of the CRA will have reserves. I think they're gonna have their hands full with, you know, doing an upgrade to the plan and everything else. I think that if we don't make this a priority and put this on their list of what we want to do, because at the end of the day, we are the policymakers and we steer the ship of what we want to see happen within the CRA. I, I don't think that anything has to be complete and done. None of the funds have to be spent. Of course, before they go out, whoever takes Raquel's place, I think that they would come to us for us to approve a plan. I, I, I will recommend that, that they have a, a plan approved in order to, to do this, but I, I haven't seen any plan of any, any other thing in front of me and we're talking about doing other projects where, I, I mean, I don't see a specific plan on all the project manager. I don't know all of the small details in that. I do, I do think that you put the foundation there. We have to, well, I think that either we're gonna reallocate the funds or it's gonna go back into the general funds because it's not needed for the purpose that it was put there. And that also shows that the CRA is responsible enough if they don't need it to just not just, oh, I'm just gonna spend it just because it's there. No, it's coming to a point to where it's our decision on what we want to do. I'm not gonna wait until somebody else comes here. I don't even know when that's going to be before we keep deciding on how we want this, this to turn out because everything takes time. And two weeks or not the end of the year, that's gonna be three years from now. And I, I've seen that happen with so many projects, so many projects. Look at the Parks Master Plan. We got all this stuff together. Look, COVID has happened, so many other things happened. Now that's on the back shelf. I, I, I'm tired of putting things on the back shelf.
Can I ask Commissioner James a question? So what, what got me excited when you started? I wasn't really that interested in it until you accidentally said cohousing and kind of sparked my brain to things that I think are interesting and beneficial to the city. So, but what, and so that ties me in and that makes me a yes. But then I think, well, but, okay, let's say we do it. What stops this new, like, what if then you guys all decide, oh, you know what? I want to go back and do those single-family homes again or, oh, I want to put in some more townhouses or something like that, which then makes me not want to. I, I'm in for it because I like the idea of doing a creative, a creative community project within the city that's very unique. Those are very successful. Those are, those are great, but what stops you guys from changing your mind in ten minutes?
No, nothing ever stops any three people from changing their minds. That's what any decision that's made, you know what I mean? So you can come and say, okay, we're gonna fund this and come November, you have people that want to repeal that and don't want to support the project anymore for the mermaids. You understand what I'm saying? There's always going to be that caveat. There's always going to be that, oh, what if? I, I, I just really don't live in a what if. I know if we have the support right now, you send the team in, you give the direction. We are here to give the direction to the city manager, to the city attorney, to, you know, the CRA, to everyone that reports to us. And so that's me being where I am in my seat and being able to induce change where I am in my seat and not really worrying about what's gonna happen in two months from now if someone changes their mind. Right now, I'm open to a lot of different creative solutions or, or whatever that could be to explore those things within having it, you know what I mean? But, you know, anybody can always change their mind.
My, and my only comment on that again is just, I, I, I would like to see a plan. And if I have a plan, then maybe we can go from there. But if we don't have a plan in place, I just don't feel like, I, I don't see why we have to. We can hold the money where it is, hold it. Put it at, at where it is at the time being. And then when we get a plan and that's put together, and then we can look at that and then we can discuss it again and whoever is here at that time. And then we can discuss it and then we can help make the decision. But I just feel like we're kind of jumping the gun right now and just trying to move the money into something that may or may not be what ultimately results in, in the end, plan. So that's all. I'm not asking to, to not do it. I'm asking to hold it, put it in a holding zone. Don't put it back into the general fund. Just put it where it is, let it sit there. And then we get a plan together and then we come back and revisit it. That's all. Could be a month, it could be two months, it could be three months. But sometime we can put an end date on it and say that we have to have a decision on it by, I don't know, December first or something, just so that there's something, we know the money's there and we know that we can reallocate it. We just need to, we need to figure out the right way to do it. And it, because it might not need to be the full five-hundred-thousand. It might be, be part of it, maybe part of that goes to something else. I just don't want to limit our options. That's all. So that's why I'm thinking just if we had a plan, then we can go from there and then we can come back and talk about it then. That's all.
Well, I'm seeking consensus on it. If we want to change direction, change direction. If we don't like the plan, we change direction. But I want to seek consensus on it. I don't, I just, we have three, we move forward, we don't, we're not gonna always agree with each other.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brandon.
I like very much what Vice Mayor said and now my mind is that way and we are the seated commissioners today. It does not mean you'll be the seated commissioners to make the decision. You can make the decision with new commissioners and they say, hell no, it's not gonna go that way. They, they just don't want it to go that way. Whereas I got that feeling, I love what she said. You know, there's been a saying here, unity in the community. That's a unified community that you were speaking about. Those people cared for each other. Don't come and move in my buildings because my five buildings are all seniors and really, I hate to say this, but you yourself are gonna feel like you don't belong there. I'm feeling, I love the new life, the young life, I do. But the lady next door says, holy God, if they can have kids, what are we gonna do? And everything changes. I would like to see us, and I'm getting the consensus that it is here, that that money goes towards the vision of both Commissioner James and Vice Mayor Lauren Ogman because that's the right way for this to go with that money. That money I want to be reallocated back to the seated now CRA director, not the one seated after she's gone, who may come in with a different need and she don't even know my city. She might not even be from here. She doesn't have the feeling of what the Vice Mayor was saying. And she put warmth in how she wanted that thing to be built and so did Tamara. And even Bill said to me, it was very nice. Well, I see four unless you get a consensus for something else. I'd like you to think about it. That new lady maybe isn't on the same road as we are.
Or, or that new gentleman, the new guy.
Uh huh, or gentlemen, right? They ain't on the same road as what we are, but we know what our city needs. We saw that.
So let me understand this. Would this take the place of, of the plan for the Smith property?
No.
No?
No, which we didn't, I think, I don't know. I think Raquel is here. She could speak more on it.
The Smith property was supposed to be for only two homes.
I think it's three.
Was three, but if I'm not mistaken, it was two homes that had to be sold at a cheaper than market rate because they were gonna be sold to a fire.
No, they're gonna be, they're gonna be market.
Or a police department and they had to hold on to that house for X amount of years. In other words, they couldn't just get it as an investment and then walk out. And if Raquel is here, that's the way she should be explaining it.
No, I know that the money, I, I know that those monies. No, I know that the money, I, I know that those monies that were initially allocated to that project is no longer needed in that capacity.
Good evening, CRA board. What's, sorry, what's the question?
The monies that were, um, allocated. Huh?
Just trying to get some clarification.
Oh, okay. So what was the question that you had that you can ask?
I wasn't sure.
The money that was allocated for Smith properties, what was that money allocated to do, build? How many houses there and what if any priorities to who bought them?
Okay, so the Smith Store properties consist of three parcels.
Go ahead.
And the initial intent of the $500,000 was for, uh, construction of single family homes as dictated by the city commission. And then the CRA board also followed with that directive.
What was the directive?
To, to develop single family housing on the three parcels. And the funding was supposed to be used for soft and hard costs of construction.
And sell to who?
Uh, sell to, well, there was a discussion about who the eligible buyers could be. The initial discussion was about, uh, public safety, frontline workers. Then there was a discussion about teachers and there, there hasn't been a, a definitive discussion to date as to who would be eligible. Um, the, the idea that I had was to bring forward some eligibility criteria similar to how we did the affordable housing program, but this would, um, be in the workforce direction. Uh, and bringing to the board the eligibility criteria for review and discussion and going forward from there.
Did we change it from what we had discussed about it being sold to a police officer or a fireman, that they had to keep it for a certain amount of years? Wasn't that discussed or should I call Bobby?
There, there was a discussion about a potential deed restriction to have, uh, those who purchased the property have to live there for a certain number of years. I do know that the initial priority was for, uh, police officers and, and those who are in the public safety.
And what was the reason for that?
Uh, because of the fact that those properties, uh, had constant incidents of
Thank you.
Police having to be called there and it, it was sort of a nuisance property. And I think that's where the idea came from, to have, uh, officers have their cars in, in the driveway and to deter crime. I think that was the idea behind it. And I know that the conversations had evolved a little bit.
So this is, this is a relocation of that $500,000 towards another project?
I, I, it, it's not a project per se. It, it is, go ahead. It was for land acquisition.
But then, but then when the city manager asks, but then does this like, the, the Smith Store project, does this replace that? Then how would that get funded?
So the, the Smith Store, um, project, uh, the reason why we did not, uh, ask for the $500,000 to be transferred, although it was approved and authorized for us to receive the $500,000, I felt that it would be more responsible to have the private sector assist with the financial side of the development of those properties. So the idea was to use the land, similar to how we did the affordable housing project, let the private market, uh, use, leverage our land and use their private resources to develop the property and not have to use the $500,000. So the Smith Store properties will be built without the $500,000. So I think this discussion is talking about how to reallocate that funding for something else.
Useful.
Okay, so the Smith Store properties does not need this 500 we're, we're, we're talking about and it can essentially, it's up for grabs.
Uh, correct. We do not need that funding. We have, um, some funding for soft costs. I know I showed some architectural renderings at the, the last board meeting. So we are covering the cost through our existing budget for some other things, but as far as the development, construction costs, uh, we will not need to use, um, that money for that.
So the, the Smith Store property, we could put out an RFP based on the criteria that we want and let the private developer invest, correct?
Well, the, uh, CRAs go through a process for disposition of land, so there would be a process for that. And based on the architectural renderings and what we are putting together as the criteria, uh, then folks will be eligible to develop and/or purchase the property.
Well, no, I was going to ask if there's any more, uh, presentations, if this was the last one.
I think that's the last one. I just like what I said about the parks.
Okay. Um, how did you want to do this? Do you want to go one by one and, and see if there's consensus for that item there?
Sure.
So you have, you have $500,000, but you, total. One thing that I want to bring to your attention that just, it just hit me. Um, so the school board has approved the 800,000 and change, 780 and change for the demolition of the existing Olson. Now, once the demolition occurs, I think that we should probably set up a meeting. I will be meeting with Mr. Runse, but I think that there should be some sort of meeting because it's so hard to get money out of them that we may look at, hey, so what happens next after the, after the demolition?
Well, and it is school board property. It's not our property.
No, but they may want to, they may want to.
They may want to partner with us. Absolutely. No, I understand that. And I know that's the goal, but as of right now, it's still school board property.
Last time we met with the school board, with, with Ms. Murray, they said that, that middle school lacks field space.
They lack everything.
Everything. And, and Vice Mayor and I were there and the school looks like it was deteriorating. So you might look at also the possibility of partnering with the school with, you know, recreational cultural component that the school may, may need and we could use as well. So that's just a thought. I didn't, I didn't want to forget that.
All right. So let's go through the different items. The first one that came up was the Vice Mayor's proposal for the Thousand Mermaids project, and that was for 100,000?
Yes, that was for 100,000 I was requesting. Do I have consensus for that?
I like that project, yeah. Okay.
Yes.
You've got 100,000 on that one? I think that's unanimous.
Thank you. Um, then my project, which is the job initiative, um, job training initiative, um, we could do 60 or even 75,000. You want to do 75, just to be safe?
Yes.
Go ahead. If we do the 75, could we then add more participants or are you going to give each person?
Well, that's what we can look at. We can, we can determine if we can add more people to it or give more money depending upon what the need is.
Yeah, if you do 7,500, let's say max, because some people may need less.
Right.
Then you could actually.
Oh, wait, are we talking about the number per? I'm okay with the six because it's a pilot and then you can learn if you need more or not, but I would want to do more than six people. You know, I'm, I'm okay with it.
More than 10 people.
The 10.
It was 10 people at 6,000.
Right.
But there might be, if it's, since we don't have the, the definitive answer on the tier, I think that was part of the reason why we were talking about doing 7,500 per for 10 people, because there might be some that need a little more and some that need a little less.
So you want to do 10 people?
10 people. That's what I was saying before, it was 10 people. I had said 10 people at 6,000 each, but we were saying now we might do 7,500 each. So then if you do 10 people at 7,500 each, it's 75,000.
I would want to start at six because it's a pilot program.
But it was always 10 people. It was never six people.
No, 10 people, I'm, I'm sorry, 6,000 each person. So I would be okay with going, uh, more than 10 people, but I.
I'm asking for consensus for the 75,000.
But you, you initially asked for the 60.
And now as we're going through it, I'm asking for 75,000 based upon the questions that were asked during the other discussion.
Okay.
One may go for more than the other.
75,000.
Yeah, I, I think it's a worthy project. I think it's going to be good. So for 75, 74.
So we are, we have 100, we have 75K.
And then, um, there was, let's see, Commissioner Harris, the, um, what was it?
Traffic calming assessment.
Thank you. News and assessment, traffic calming assessment. Um, we don't have a definitive number on that, but you estimated what, 70,000?
And it did, right?
80,000? What was it?
We put 75 just to.
I'm fine with that.
As a placeholder.
I think it's necessary. And there, is there a possibility we can get some money through the MPO as well?
I texted him, but I have not heard back from him, but I will definitely follow, follow up with him. It's great.
Because if we do, then we can always put that money back towards something else.
Yeah, I think having that placeholder is good and if we can get it from another source. Um, but I think 75 for a city this size.
Does that, do we have consensus on that?
Yes.
Uh, the rental assistance.
So we're at 250, right? We have 250.
And the rental assistance would be, you asked, you said you wanted 250 for that? So then that would get us to the 500.
But the reserve, so how do you want to?
Yeah, it's, you could do the rental assistance first, that's fine. Um, yeah.
But then you're not going to have any money.
I, I have, we have other monies. I've spoken with both Frank and Anna. We found other cost savings that allow me to definitely be able to do the projects that I'm bringing forward.
I, I'm a yes for the rental assistance, but then we're not going to be able to.
I just wanted to ask Frank just to make sure, because we, we did an exercise with, um, Commissioner James, um, and out of the general fund, we identified 3,500?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the trailer wasn't building.
No, but there was also the funding that, um, we spoke about that we're going to be, uh, we're going to get that 100%. What is it called? The global match?
Yeah, you're talking about for the FEMA hardening projects, the city match. But that, but that 670, I think about $700,000 that was in the budget, that will not be used. That was supposed to come out of fund balance. So it's still going to need consensus for the, for the commission to use that money for something else.
Exactly.
So is there additional money or no?
Yes.
It's, it's going to roll back to, it was, it was already planned to be used from fund balance. So just like this 500,000 that we're going to use from.
So you would be taking out from reserves? It's not, it's not a line item in the budget. You would take it. So in addition, in addition to the 500,000, if you want to add on, that's, that's from reserves.
So do we know what the criteria is going to be for the rental assistance? Is it going to be the same from the county? Because I've been trying to get some numbers today out of the county and they have not been able to provide any, even though the window closed last night.
I know that they probably won't get a number from that until later this week. But, um, but no, I would like to do it similar to the county because it's, it's done based upon the need from COVID, which is, which was the reason for it. We may be able to get some money out of the CARES Act, correct? To pay for that?
Yeah, but, but that's not guaranteed. Remember, it's 231 cities dipping into that. We're ready to go with all our expenditures.
Right.
I think that, um, that's something we can probably discuss at the next CRA meeting, that they're going to be the facilitators of it.
The 250 is just for CRA?
No, the 250 shouldn't just be for CRA, it should be citywide.
This is why I discussed this at the, the CRA budget workshop.
Okay, well, I'm, then I'm opposed to that because I think it, it's the 250, if you're going to put 250 towards rental assistance, it shouldn't just be in CRA. There are a lot of people outside of the CRA that are impacted because of COVID and cannot pay their rent. And there are people that own the homes that are not getting rent received outside of the CRA.
I understand.
So I'm fine with 250, but it needs to be citywide.
Okay, well, I am seeking consensus for what we discussed at the CRA budget workshop. And then I was told there that we couldn't discuss it there because the funds will have to come from the city. So I'm discussing it here at the city, the same thing, the same area that is in need and the people who are from those areas. So I'm just seeking consensus.
And my answer is no.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. You have every right to say no.
And we can bring it back as a citywide one as well if it fails.
I, I knew we were talking about this because I remember that this was the argument last time, so I knew it was CRA. Um, but, but then, I, I don't, how does this then affect the, the reserve and part of it? And so after this, you also asked for the 60 for the, for the reserve. Um, we still have the Chester Bird and the, the demo, uh, the demo assessment.
I'll withdraw the Chester Bird Park issue if we do the 250 towards citywide.
You've already voted no. So that's your vote. Your vote is no. It's mine, it's mine.
I'm talking, please, I'm speaking.
And I'm talking too. Don't just stick your finger up at me.
I am speaking. It is my turn to speak now. And I just said.
No, you don't talk to me like I'm your child.
And you don't talk to me like I'm your child.
No, because you always do that. Like, you need a hug, honey.
You do it to me all the time. Please stop.
She need a hug.
Let me just say one thing. I'm, I'm telling you that I'm withdrawing something from that list because she had a concern about what was on that list. I am withdrawing an item. But I will also, if we withdraw that, I would rather see this go to citywide so it impacts more people overall. And that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Well.
So I, I think it's, I think it's something worth discussing. I mean, so her point is, is that she's just bringing up a different angle for this of doing the CRA versus doing citywide. I think it's something, and I, I understand, you know, you, you made your point for why you want to do it for just strictly the CRA, but I think it's a worthy discussion of having it in, in, you know, and I remember very clearly the discussion about how the CRA is really our most vulnerable population. And the points that you made were very, um, important and factual. I think the mayor also makes, you know, a, a very important point that this, you know, is obviously something that affects the entire city and that for $250, $250,000, it, it's something to think about. Why, why, why not do it citywide?
Because, again, when I spoke about this at the CRA level, at the CRA workshop. See, I'm not the type of person that just like to go sit in people churches in the CRA areas or show up for different things in CRA areas and use the CRA areas when it's time for election time. I'm the type of person that really wants to make change and help the people in those CRA level, um, areas. I, I know from doing my background and my research, again, why the CRA area exists. I know that that area, which is not, we're not only the first city in Broward County. We've had the first black community in Broward County. And do you really want to know why they were placed there? They were placed there, those were the people that did the farming and did the construction work for everyone else. They wanted to consolidate all of the people and put them in one area. Then these people had to worry about redlining. People couldn't go to the beach. It was John Ulois Park then, and now it's Ula Johnson and Mizel or whatever it's called now. These same people are still struggling to this day without a pandemic for assistance. I, I am, I am, it upsets me because I wish that I grew up in a city where it wasn't in need of a CRA. It upsets me because I go through there all the time and there are a lot of people pre-COVID that needed assistance. So area are in need of assistance. Can you just imagine how many times I've had to pay people rent? I, I'm housing someone right now to live in a motel because they can't afford for them and their child to live in their place because they lost their place already. So I'm not, if, I, I, I get sick of hearing, why does a CRA get to have this? Why does the CRA? Well, how about you go to a town that, that doesn't need a CRA? And then you will understand why our CRA needs the attention that it needs. I should not have to give a speech every time it comes towards helping the people within the CRA. I've had to have speeches of supporting for building six affordable homes. Like, I've had to champion being on a board where you don't have five people championing, but you have five people showing up the ribbon cuttings and groundbreakers. This is the type of board that we sit on. So when, yes, if the city wants to mirror a program that the CRA has and the CRA facilitates, mirror the program. There has never been one time since I've been sitting here in my last four years that I have had anyone from the city come up and try to do any type of a affordable housing or anything, until the CRA does it and then all of a sudden, why did the CRA get this? I don't know. Why, it's a lot of, why did a lot of stuff happen? Why did redlining happen? Why did discrimination happen? Why did we need, why do we need someone black? Why are we trying to head more officers to an area because there's more crime? There's more crime because there's more vacant buildings. There's more vacant buildings because the area is getting older. There's no one to help these grandmothers out. We just had somebody do a quick claim deed and didn't know for ninety-six dollars, lost her entire home in this area. This is a vulnerable area. If you don't want to, like, everything isn't meant for citywide. I didn't bring this citywide. I brought this at the CRA workshop. If you don't want to vote for it, do not vote for it. But stop trying to negotiate my items or items that are brought here, my items. No one's negotiating anything else. Matter of fact, we just gave you more money for the project you wanted to do. We gave you the money for the project you want to do. We gave you money for the project you wanted to do. Every time it gets down to a project that Commissioner James wants to do, I have concerns. Why this? Why that? Can't we just wait two more weeks? It's BS. And it's very personal. If it's a good project, let's do it and let's get out of our own way.
Can I say one thing?
Oh, I was, okay.
I need to say one thing. All right. The reason why I'm saying citywide is because this is supposed to be a one-time expenditure because we're taking it from reserves. The CRA district, the people who live there who rent, as you have indicated and are correct, they are always having a problem. They do, they are more vulnerable. They do have issues with being able to pay their rent on a regular basis. This was specifically supposed to be with regard to COVID. It was supposed to be with regard to people, that's why the program was done through the county, was for COVID and for people who were affected by that and were unable to pay their rent. We just got through saying that we'd like to do something that's similar to what the county did, based upon their criteria. Their criteria included showing proof of expenses that, or proof of loss of income due to COVID. So that is why I'm saying it should be a citywide program. Otherwise, it is not a one-time expenditure. It is an ongoing expenditure that is needed every month for, for as long as needed. So this is a one-time expenditure based upon the need at the time, based upon the pandemic. That is all. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say thank you, Commissioner James, for, for that reminder. And I, I just, I'm sorry that you have to remind me so much. And I know it's personal to you and I hear you and you have my support on that item.
May, can, can you just remind me of what was the Byrd thing?
I ask Bill, he don't even. No, I, what I had said, and I had said it at the last workshop, was that because we have a Parks Plan, a Parks Master Plan that we do want to see move forward and at some point we're going to need a geo bond. And in order to sell people on, on voting yes to a geo bond for that Parks Plan, it would be nice if we could show them one park that we have done and show them before and after, to show them what they're paying for. But I will withdraw that if, in fact, we could look at this, this other project for a citywide project, based upon what the, the need was as far as COVID was concerned. So, like I said, my, I'm, I'm saying no to her request because I think it needs to be citywide and not just in one area because it's a one-time expense.
If you withdraw that Byrd Park, is that going to hurt them at all?
No, I mean, it's something, I, I, look, that was just something I wa, I was throwing out there as an idea because I thought it would, um, it would help in the long run. I'm trying to look long-term. I'm not trying to look at right now. I'm trying to look at long-term needs and where we would actually need to put money down the road. And if we're going to have to go and put something on the ballot, have a special election, whatever we're going to do in order to ask for, for the taxpayers to fund a bond, then we would need to have their, 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 they'd want to, want to know what it is that they're buying. So that was my thought process on that because it's a smaller park that doesn't need a lot of change to it. It could probably be done inexpensively. We could do the assessment of it now to figure out exactly what it is that needs to be done and how much it's going to cost us and do the drawings and the whole thing, um, the actual architecture. That's what I was suggesting. That's all.
So we're in the middle. I'm seeing if I can have consensus for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for rentals assistance. Um, to go to the CRA. You say yes? Okay, that's three yeses.
We're going to take your consensus. I gave mine. Oh, thanks.
So the next one was the, the sixty thousand in reserve to go to the CRA. Do we have that now or is the two fifty, is that, is that it? We're done?
We're at five hundred and sixty.
That's what I, what I was asking, uh, the commissioner, I said, if I, if we vote yes on it, then we're done.
No, when I spoke, when I had my meeting with Frank and Anna and we spoke about this, um, I, I know that I spoke with other projects that I wanted to do. I, matter of fact, at that time, I didn't even know that we had another five hundred thousand that, you know, that Anna was saying, okay, you guys go and fight it out about it or discuss it out. She didn't say fight it out. That's me. Um, so I said, I wanted to find my own savings so that I could be able to have this. And that was something that we spoke about then. And so all of a sudden now saying that, oh, that money, uh, from what I heard, that we didn't even know that it was going to be a global match then. I don't know how we already reallocated the monies that we didn't even know if we were going to get it for sure at that time. But all of a sudden, now all the money is gone. I can't, I can't speak on that.
The money's there. It's just in, in, in reserves. The money's there.
So the money, the money was there that we already had allocated to go somewhere.
We're, we're proposing five hundred thousand dollars in addition. Like, for example, before the five hundred thousand, we had discussed the Police Athletic League and that's in here. So when we continued with the budget and as we were able to secure more monies, for example, we were able to secure more of the FEMA monies this year. So that is still available to you. You could say, you know what, instead of tapping into our reserves for half a million, we want you to tap into our reserves for six hundred, six hundred and fifty. That's up to you.
No, I'm talking about the conversation that I had with Frank. It was very specific. And Frank specifically told me, oh, or from what I can, from what I can recollect, that those monies that we approved to be given as a match, we probably were no longer going to need it as a match because we were going to get a global match. So that, to me, is money that we already approved to go at a specific place that we're now no longer going to need. And I'm not saying all six hundred thousand, let's all find other projects to do with that. So I, I'm, I'm unsure of why now it's not available. It was available two weeks ago.
It, we're not saying that it's not available. We're saying that it's available, but it's in reserves. So instead of tapping into what we've discussed tonight, if it's up to you to tap into more from, from the reserves. But that global match was always going to come from reserves.
Okay, so the global match was still, so instead of six hundred thousand dollars coming from the global, I mean, for the reserves, only sixty will come from the reserves as far as this part of the portion over the five hundred, correct?
Right.
I confused you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's like this. This, the money was, was put in the budget to be used for the global match. It looks like we don't need to use that money for the global match. So the money goes out of the budget, back into reserves until you all decide you want to use it for something else.
So it isn't an additional.
But it's not for any one commissioner. It's earmarked the money for anything. It has to be a decision among.
Correct, correct. That's why we're here. So I'm just trying to say it's not additional to whatever that six hundred thousand that we already had approved and now it's a cost saving, so we no longer need it and you're putting it back in the budget. But now we can use sixty thousand of that six hundred thousand.
So, right, so now you approve five hundred plus this sixty, so we're at a total of five hundred and sixty thousand. Right?
Yes, from reserves.
From reserves, yes. And we'll put that in the budget based on what, you know, your directive has been this evening.
Is there, was there consensus for it? I don't know. I want to make sure. Was there consensus for that part of it, the sixty?
Yes, yes. Five, five sixty. We have that.
She wants consensus on it. I, I just, like I said, my only issue is I think we need a plan before we make that decision and the money will be there. It's not like it's going anywhere. So I would just ask that we hold off until we get a plan.
And my feeling is we're a seated board right now and we have a CRA director who knows the city and the people in our needs. And I don't feel that we can't make a decision so that the next commission or the next CRA director from Miami or wherever changes it. We have, I, I like to have the right to know where that money's going. I'm the one that put it there with our board. I don't think it's right. I think you're only doing that hoping that you get a, I'm being honest with you. Hoping that you get people up here who will disagree with putting this money into such a worthy cause. That's what this is all about.
Not my feeling on it. I, I just, I just want a plan.
Yeah, I, I.
The plan is what she said. Her plan is great.
It's, it's, that's not a plan. That, that's a vision and a spark of creativity. And I understand her desire for a plan, but I also understand what you're saying of setting the direction and the intention of the money. And if, I, I guess, like the commissioner said, I mean, she does have a point. If, if then the direction of that creative vision starts going south to somewhere else, um, you know, at least I'm here for two more, two more years.
You're one.
And, uh, you know, I guess, you know, just raise holy hell if it, if it's not the, uh, if it's not the direction.
Why can't we get a consensus now?
We, we can.
No, because she's working towards it. But I want to remind, um, I want to remind everyone of even what has happened, even with Smith Store property, and we don't have, we only have three people up here that was on here, you know, before that. And we're still talking about what that intention was for. You see how we still bring it up? So if we're going to decide what the intention is for, I'm not the type to just say, oh, intention's for that? Okay, we're going to switch it now. That's, that's, that's not who I am. Like, if the intention is for something, make that the intention or bring it back up.
Well, but like you said, and these things get, now, if, let's say we move forward with this, it's going to get chopped up and talked about a hundred different times with a hundred different people. And who knows what it ends up looking like when it comes out. So, um, I, I mean, I, I love what we kind of tapped into here tonight and talked about. Uh, you know, and I, I hope it goes forward as that and doesn't, uh, yeah, change into something else.
Oh, is that yes?
So yes, I, I, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of, of doing it. I, I understand why she wants a plan. I, I want a plan. But, um, I don't, I, I think it's fine to go forward with it as it is and to do the land acquisition.
What's the amount for land acquisition so we can add it to the five sixty?
No, no, this is the five hundred that was already earmarked for. This isn't in addition to.
Okay, to, to reallocate.
To real, it's to reallocate it.
From Smith's property to land acquisition.
Well, yeah, but you would have to give it to the CRA so they could do the land acquisition. Or, or do you not have to? I don't know. I don't know the logistics of it.
Frank could probably answer that.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's neither here nor there. I mean, if it's, the money is sitting in the Capitol Projects Fund. It's already segregated from the rest of the, of the reserves and, and other funds in the city. So it's, when you move forward and if it needs to be moved to the CRA at that time, it can. Or it can just be used, we can issue a payment directly to that fund.
In order to move it, in order to do something with it again?
Well, you're going to have to come back to a meeting to take action to purchase properties anyway. And at that time, the funding can be re-appropriated.
It, will it have to come back to both meetings instead of just one? Can we just do it where we can just operate as a CRA board and operate as a city? Or does it have to come back to the city first and get permission? Because we're, that's what we're kind of doing right now.
Can't it just be done by the CRA board?
I think so.
I think it can because it's already been allocated to the CRA, right? So, yeah, so we don't have to do two meetings.
So it just goes from Smith Store to CRA Acquisition?
It just goes CRA General Fund?
Right.
I'm going to get that the item to be voted on.
It's under Capitol Project, so it's, it's.
We got it.
Commissioner Harris, did you have?
No, I mean, I, I agree that, um, you know, neighborhood infill is important. And I can think of like, you know, the lots that we have over by the Aldi store where we thought we could put more townhomes. But if we can acquire the land on either side of that, you know, maybe we can build six. And then I'm thinking about the Fourteenth Avenue, Fourteenth Terrace, where the new houses are. But there's some empty lots around there, so maybe we can acquire those. And, you know, because behind the houses, it's nice and green and maybe we can acquire that for a park for the neighborhood.
Well, but even around the, the Smith Store.
Yeah, I'm, you know.
With Raquel, all around that area.
I mean, I have, you know, a binder full of drawings of different homes and different projects from even Habitat. They'll build really nice townhomes, so there's an opportunity here to, um, have some housing choices in a neighborhood that could be new and upcoming with the adjacent property acquisitions. Don't you think? I mean, we could do some of the things that you were talking about.
I'm not against, I'm not against.
No, I'm not against it. No, I, I just think, you know.
We all, we all agree. I mean, I, I, and I think it's a very rational want to have the plan. So I, I, I think we're all kind of on the same page. We all just want to start it in a different way. But, I mean, she asked for consensus. I thought Raquel, I, I thought Raquel was saying things. Okay, so then, you have consensus then?
My, my consensus is to put it in the CRA budget. My consensus is not to have to have this argument every time that we come up.
No, I, I was just.
No, 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 no. I'm just making it very clear. Oh, not, not.
This is the second, third time.
Done.
Second.
Earmark it from Smith Store to land acquisition.
No, to put it in the CRA budget. That's my consent. That's my, that's my ask.
Reallocated.
We just change the title to put it in the CRA.
You're right.
And so that, so that's all the projects that we have that we have discussed. And so, and you had a presentation to do. Are we doing your presentation?
Listen, you can't, you, you, you have my presentations here, but I just wanted to bring, yes.
I, just about your presentation, you might want to present. I, I didn't see Danny here, but I know we had spoken about community policing and I didn't see that addressed within the budget. And I'm not sure with everything that had happened, if you've had that conversation with him or if anything has changed with that.
I did, a, actually, um, I, I believe that we have an appropriation for, for the Police Athletic League. Um, also, um, which is an additional program.
Where is that going to be?
Um, well, we're thinking now, based on our discussions with the landmark group, that, um, if they move forward with, with their project behind the garage, that they would allocate a, a, a large community room for us to be able to run, for us to be able to run, um, the program from, from there.
Because I, because I've been speaking with, um, with them, well, not them. I've been speaking with some people involved in the project and they have no idea. Like, because I was really excited about it and when I brought that up, they're like, mm, that's not really part of the plan. So I, I just want, I, I just want to make sure that we're not just going to cut it down to just one little room. But I, I would really want to find a place that, that can be their own and not necessarily in someone else's development that we kind of don't have any control over.
No, Commissioner, from someone that aside, not one, not two, but three successful Police Athletic Leagues in the city of, of Miami Beach. Um, one that, that initiated in the city of South Miami and one that I initiated in the city of North Miami Beach. Um, if we're going to do something, we're going to do it right. Um, the, the youth and mentoring youth and having these programs and these partnerships with police are very dear to my heart. And every single conversation that I've had with the principal, with Francisco Rojo, and every meeting that we've had with him has been, this is what we want. And in every single conversation is something that he has been supportive of. Um, it, it ideally would be in one of our existing parks. Um, but that can be a long ways away in regards to COVID and what has done to the Parks Master Plan.
Okay, what about, go ahead. No, I just wanted to know about the community policing, like the training, like, what's going to be different this time around in the budget that we can see, that we can advocate for, that we can speak about when it comes down to like, community policing? Even if it is dealing with policy changes, if it's dealing with, I, I just, you know, I didn't, I haven't seen it. And I know that, you know, everyone's kind of been on vacation here and there and I, Danny, you know, I, I haven't really gotten back to that conversation that me, you and him had about what the actual plan is. And I, I still don't really know it.
The, the conversations that I've had with Chief Marks is, is, is a global initiative that Sheriff Tony is doing in regards to policy. What we're doing here in our level is, is continuing to augment the programming that we started last year. For, for example, with the, the fishing tournament, augment that, expand that. Let this be the first year that we begin the Police Athletic League. That would mean having our police officers involved in the after-school programs, in the coaching programs. So that's the conversation that we've had and we're going to roll it off, we're going to roll it out this year. So that's, that's in the plan. Basically, um, you have three documents here. One, you've already seen, which was our presentation that Frank and I did, um, at the first budget workshop. The other one that you have here is my budget message. So if you read everything or anything at all, you will read the budget message and find out that this year is, is a year of a pathway to the investment. If, if you look at what we put in the budget in 2020, um, how it compares to what the, the city budget was amended in 2019 and 2018. The first year of this administration had a smaller budget than we adopted and amended in 2019 and in 2018. And that's what leadership is all about. Leadership is about. in 2018. And that's what leadership is all about. Leadership is about being able to do more with, with less. And I, I took that challenge head-on. I inherited a budget in 2019, as did the mayor, as, as did the vice mayor, because they had nothing to do, neither did I, with the 2019 budget. We managed that 2019 budget to ensure that we were 2 million plus in the block. Okay? And then in 2020, we further challenged ourselves to have a lower budget than we did the two previous years. And what we're doing this year now is investing like we've never done in the past decade in the city, in every area of the city, in parks, in infrastructure, in streets, in sidewalks, based on really taking a global look at the city. So, you should be very, very proud of this budget and what has been accomplished. So, if you have to talk to any of your residents, in a nutshell, in these couple of pages, you have where their money is going to and the return on, on their investment. And that's basically, in a nutshell, what I wanted to talk. We don't have to go page by page. It's all in here for you to read. And we'll put it up on the website for everybody to see.
Was there, I don't know how to put this. Let's see. Was there a POW program here years ago?
I don't know.
And why did they walk out on our city?
I don't know if they walked out or it wasn't managed appropriately.
Was there a POW program here, Tom?
I don't recall. I've heard it talked about.
I know because it's really bothering me and I feel that it should be looked into is the fact that there was a POW program here. I wasn't here, but it's been brought to my attention because obviously what we talk about here gets out. And they're saying, what, another one? They didn't like the idea of it at all. And they said that they walked away from the city. So, if that's true, and you were successful with three in Miami, I'd like to know if, first of all, if it's true. It would be the year, I would say, that Bob Bowlen maybe came into this city. So, I don't know how many years that is, but I heard there was one here and it was not successful, that there were meetings and stuff like that, that the police don't even attend. They just give it off to her or him to run. And there is no interest at all by the police department with the people involved in it. Please just look into that because you don't like to step in crap twice.
No, absolutely. And I'd never like to trip over the same stone either.
I don't want you to either because they love to have that on you. Trust me.
No, no, listen. If we're not tripping over stones, we're not doing anything. So, it's like you can't fumble. You can't over, over, you know, get the ball stolen if you're not handling it. But if, if it failed, I don't know why it failed. But imagine after-school programs with cops there, working with kids. In South Miami, the kids got to know the cop when they were in the back of the police car.
Did the cops attend all their functions?
Yeah, you betcha. It, it, it was a very successful program. And, and we became, back in the day in South Miami, the first All-America city in Miami Dade County since 1955. In Miami Beach, it was an outstanding program. And in North Miami Beach, every year, it has gotten better and better. I don't know what led to the mistake or what led to the failure. I'll look into it. But I would...
First, be sure that it was here then because these people were here before me and they're saying yes. So, I said, I'm going to bring it to the attention of this...
And, and the Police Athletic League is, is citywide for all, for all youth in, in, in our community. And that interaction with police officers at all, all levels.
Vice Mayor, okay. I'll make this quick since we're wrapping up. You know, I was just thinking, I went to go out and get a drink of water real quick. And I know that when we're talking about these different projects, we kind of get heated and it gets a little contentious. And then I'm out there and I'm like, thinking for a second. And look at this paper. Like, look at these projects. We just, there's not one bad project. Just look at the city overall. Forget about CRA, citywide. We just passed something for, to get, for jobs? Something for, in the environment? Something for traffic? I mean, how much can these residents talk about traffic forever? And that's one of the most passionate things ever that they, that our residents get so upset about. Something for, a huge amount for rental assistance?
That's great.
It is great. It's all, but that's the point. It's, it's all great. And each one of us, you know, has put forth their idea for the project. And they were all great. They're really, really great projects. And they're all really relevant to what our residents call us about every, every day or week. So, you know, I, I hate when it gets, when it gets so bad. But, and, and I understand why because it's, it's public money and it's the money of the people who, you know, put us here. But man, I, if, if a resident came before me and said, you know, what the heck went on there? How did you approve all this stuff? I could defend this. I could easily defend this because these are some damn good projects. And I think everyone did a, one hell of a job. And you may not like how they started. You may not like the conversations that had to take place to get them started. In some of the cases, they shouldn't have had to be like that to be started. But guess what? They got started tonight. And I'm just, I'm really proud of everyone. They're damn good projects.
And if I may, through the mayor, this, this started way, way back in April. And I want to thank Frank and, and every single one of those department directors that are over there in the admin room. Because like the vice mayor says, you can be very, very, very proud because there's benefits here for everybody. The benefits are endless in, in this budget. But it was a total team effort with all of you leading the way and every single one of the departments and legal as well, which is always there for us too. And that concludes my presentation.
And if there's nothing else for adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.